All right, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. I realize we may not have flags where we are, but please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Backwards, sorry.
Hello there.
I pledge allegiance. This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska Governing Body. The City of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed in the Civic Center Room, where Greg Butcher is currently located. Disclosure, this is the disclosure of the meeting recording processes that will be used for this Zoom call. We do not have a participant signup sheet, but if you do decide to address the council, we would ask you to state your name and your address so that we can identify you in the clerk's record. And I will explain that procedure when we get to it here in a second. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate responses shall be made. And the City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items. Please call the roll.
Beck.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Wilkin.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Camprith.
Here.
Coulterman.
Present.
Miller.
Here.
And I'm going to try and get Alyssa here. Alyssa, you'll have to unmute yourself.
You gotta make this so difficult. I'm here.
There we go. All members accounted for and present.
Okay. We have all business first, so the first item we have is the draft minutes of November 17th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Moved by Singleton, second by Schmidt.
Correct.
All right, Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Hendricks. I got muted again.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, because this is the meeting where we would have newly elected officials, we now need a motion to adjourn that meeting and then start the second meeting with the new members. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, Greg.
Coulterman motion, second Singleton.
Please call the roll.
Beck. Is that a yes, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay, Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we'll do to call the roll on the new members.
All right. On the new members, second verse same as the first. Beck. Schmidt.
Yes, or here.
Wilkin.
Present.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Here.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes, I am here.
Miller.
Here.
Motion passes.
Okay, Greg, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you for the oath of offices.
All right. We have oaths. We will do the council members tonight. I think we're appointing a new, or reappointing the chief of the fire department later, and so we'll take care of his in the office. But we'll go ahead and do everybody else online tonight. I'll try to read this slowly. When I say your name, state your name. Don't repeat the words "your" name. So up tonight, we will have council member Jessica Coulterman, council member Chris Schmidt, council member John Singleton, and council member Jonathan Wilkin. And once we complete these, I will get the oaths to you, and then we'll seal them and sign them like we do after the fact. So if you'll all four, repeat after me. I.
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 State your name.
John Wilkin.
Jessica Coulterman.
John Singleton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the ordinances of the City of Seward, Nebraska.
And the ordinances of the City of Seward, Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation.
That I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the Office of City Council. I can slow that one down. Sorry.
Say that one again.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council Member of the City of Seward, Nebraska.
Of the Office of City Council Member of the City of Seward, Nebraska.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
I do further swear that I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government.
Or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States or of this state.
Of the United States or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
During such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I'm in this position.
I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party.
I will not advocate or become a member of any political party.
Organization that advocates the overthrow of the government.
Or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States or of this state.
Of the United States or this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We've completed that process. We'll have them sign their oaths in the office, and I think that seats the members.
Okay. Next, we have in the confirmation of mayor appointments, we have a number of these, so we can try and look for them as quickly as possible. We're going to, we'll do the first reapportment of James Kimsey as fire chief.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second.
Moved by Schmidt.
I'll second.
Second by Coulterman.
Okay, please call the roll.
Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, we have the reapportment of Jonathan Jane to the Rail Campus Development Review Committee for a two-year term.
Move to approve.
I believe that Camprith. Nope, nope. Who was that that moved it?
Eleanor said this at the same time.
Oh, okay, we'll go with that, and a second by.
Carl.
Miller.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the reapportment of Rick Endicott to the Cemetery Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is that moved by Wilkin?
Yes.
Wilkin, second by Coulterman.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next, we have the reapportment of Mel Varner as an alternate and Dr. Dan Ellis to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for three-year terms.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next, we have the reapportment of Brad Bowen to the Housing Appeals Board for a three-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Wilkin, second by Schmidt.
Please call the roll.
Teach sheet. Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
She's nodding yes.
I see a yes, and Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have the reapportment of Matt Streisand to the Housing Authority Board for a five-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
I believe that was Camprith. And Singleton, third with a second.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll do the council member committee on liaisons for number seven together. So we have 7A is the Fire Department, John Singleton. 7B is Cemetery Board, Sid Camprith. 7C is the Tree Board, Alyssa Hendricks. 7D is the Parking Recreation Board, Ellen Beck and Chris Schmidt. E is the Civic Center Commission, which is Sid Camprith and John Singleton. F is the Planning Commission, which is Chris Schmidt and Sid Camprith. And G is the Library Board, which is Jonathan Wilkin and Jessica Coulterman.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Miller, second by Camprith.
Schmidt moved.
Okay. I heard Carl's first, I think, but we'll go with Schmidt. Schmidt motion, second by Camprith. Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
She's still nodding her head, yes. And Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have additional appointment of council members to various boards and committees. For 8A Personnel, Finance, and Audit Committee, Ellen Beck, Carl Miller, Chris Schmidt, and Jonathan Wilkin. For 8B, we have E911 Board, which is John Singleton and Jessica Coulterman. For Item C is the CDBG Application Review Board for Economic Development, which is Jonathan Wilkin. For D, we have Seward Celine County Solid Waste Agency, which is John Singleton. E, we have Seward Foundation, which is Carl Miller and Jessica Coulterman. For F, we have Seward, or it's a, for F, we have Rail Campus Development Review Committee, which is Chris Schmidt and Carl Miller. And G is the Seward County Chamber Development Partnership, which is Ellen Beck for a three-year term. And Ellen, you're okay with that?
Fine.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm going to go with Beck. And Miller on the second.
That works.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks. She's nodding, and Miller.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Next, we have the election of council president, and I need to explain this a little bit, because normally we do this in person, and it has historically been a secret ballot. I believe the last time it was unanimous consent, because only one council member was nominated. So you have two options. Either we don't do a secret ballot and we'll do a roll call, and you would state the council member. If we have more than one that's nominated, you would state the one you're voting for. If you would want to do it a somewhat secret ballot, then I would suggest maybe texting Greg your vote. Obviously, he's going to know. But it kind of depends on how you want to do it. Given the circumstances, it's kind of hard to have a real, real easy workaround. So.
For the nominations, we don't need that in secret, though, do we?
No, no.
Okay.
So we'll see if we have more than one, but if we do, then that will be the next decision that will have to be made.
Well, then I nominate Chris. He's done a good job.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Sid Camprith.
Okay.
I'll accept.
Okay. We have two. Is there any other nomination? So then I guess the simplest would be just to do a roll call vote, unless the council members want to have it as a secret ballot. I don't know how else to accomplish that. So I guess I would ask, are there any objections to doing a roll call vote?
Mayor, I will note that I did do a quick review on this item, and there's nothing in city code or the Nebraska state statutes that require the appointment of the president that require it to be a specific kind of vote. It's just it needs to be elected. So I didn't know if we had something in code that may require us to do it by a secret ballot, but there was nothing in.
The past practice was just to hand out slips of pieces of paper. Did Kelly, do you want to add to that? Can you unmute Kelly for a second?
Yep.
That's correct. That's been a past practice. I looked at the ordinance as well. It doesn't require it. It's just been a past practice. It's a Roberts Rule of Order procedure that we've always followed, but I think this method is fine. Council might want to, at the next meeting, ratify the election. Or the next time we're actually in person.
And we would probably have a motion at the next in-person meeting to ratify everything that we would pass anyway in the meantime. So Kelly, are you saying we could do a roll call? Or would you recommend them texting it in? Or how do you, what would be preferred?
I don't have any objection to doing a roll call.
Okay. Do any of the council members have an issue with that? If not, then Greg, you want to do a roll call, and then they can state who they're voting for?
That's fine.
Don't forget to unmute Melissa or Alyssa.
Oh, yeah, Alyssa's going to have to be unmuted so she could specifically state. So.
Not nod, not nod and up and down.
All right. We will start with Beck.
Chris Schmidt.
Schmidt.
I vote for myself.
Wilkin.
Chris Schmidt.
Singleton.
Sid.
Councilman Camprith.
Sid.
Councilmember Coulterman.
Chris Schmidt.
Councilmember Hendricks, and I may have to unmute.
Unmute. I wanted to stay. Um, either one. They're both good. I don't know.
We put you on the spot, and you'll have to vote.
Okay, you have to mute me. Um. Chris.
Councilmember Miller.
Schmidt.
We have six votes for Schmidt, two votes for council member Camprith.
Okay. Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
The next item we have is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion in a second, please call the roll.
I have a motion by Singleton, second by Schmidt. Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing, and this is a public hearing for a liquor license application of Squire Wards LLC, doing business as Squire Wards, 133 North Sixth Street. We have an item A, which would be the resolution recommending approval of a Class C liquor license. And then item B would be recommending approval of Greg Nelson as the manager of the Class C liquor license for Squire Wards. Greg, did you want to mention anything on this?
Just note that it's Class C Beer Wine Distilled Spirits, on and off sale liquor license. All documents were turned in accordingly and distributed thereafter. Nothing came in of concern at the administrative level.
Okay. Item one A then is a resolution, so I would need someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Greg, does this have a number, this resolution?
Uh. Yeah, hold on, let me get to the resolution in my packet. I don't have a specific number listed. Is there one on your items there?
I don't see it.
Probably got one of the tabs on it. Or it might be on your old agenda there, mayor, before it was updated.
Most likely going to be 43, but.
Is this, you think it's 2020-43, Carl?
The last one we did was 42, so.
Okay, all right, 2020-43. Okay, thanks, Carl. Resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution Number 2020-43. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Summer.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
You'll have to catch me. I was directing traffic with.
Who was the second?
Who was the motion? Wilkin was the second.
Alyssa was the motion.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, and item B, that's recommend approval of Greg Nelson as manager of Class C liquor license for Squire Wards LLC. We just need a simple motion for this.
Summer.
Second.
The motion in a second.
Moved by Wilkin, seconded by Camprith.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have our administrative items. Our first item is consideration of ordinance to require individuals to wear facial coverings in public places in response to COVID-19 and exceptions thereof. This proposed mask mandate is on tonight's agenda, as it was a request from the Seward Memorial Healthcare System with the support of Four Corners Health Department. The Seward Memorial Healthcare System had expressed concern that the recent increase in COVID-19 cases in Seward County had reduced their capacity and could impact their ability to provide effective and efficient healthcare for the Seward community. Their concern is that the current situation could become much more dire if there are additional surges in COVID-19 cases in the near future, which could result in a continued reduction in capacity. And so for this discussion to be productive, it needs to be orderly. If you are on the Zoom video and wish to speak, then send Greg Butcher a direct message, and then he will call on you to speak at the appropriate time. He is on this call as City of Seward. So that's who you would need to private message if you would like to speak. And make sure your Zoom name, if you wish to speak, is your name, so he knows which speaker to unmute at that time. Once everyone on Zoom, on video Zoom, has had an opportunity to speak, then Greg will unmute everyone, so that if there's anyone who is participating by phone only, that they will have a chance then to speak as well. Each person will have an opportunity to speak up to five minutes. However, I or the council may ask questions, which would not count against your opportunity or time to speak. I will tell you when your five minutes are up, and you will need to stop. Otherwise, Greg will have to mute you like the Oscars. So at this time, I would ask Memorial Healthcare Systems has a representative to speak this evening, and then follow that person with the Four Corners Health Department as well, and then we will open it up to anyone else wishing to speak. So I see Roger Reamer or Dr. Kettner. Would one of you like to lead us off?
I sent a request to Roger first to unmute. There we go. I think, Roger, we have you. Yes, can you hear me okay? Yes. All right, very good. My name is Roger Reamer. My address is 1616 Carroll K Boulevard here in Seward. I want to start off by thanking the council for giving us the opportunity this evening to make a statement and recommendation for universal masking policy. We'd sent out a statement and recommendation earlier today. Hopefully, all the council members have had a chance to see this. Sent that to Mr. Butcher and Mayor Eichmeyer. The statement and recommendation has been signed off by each of the physicians within Memorial Healthcare Systems and each of the physician assistants, as well as myself. As you know, in the last couple of weeks, there's been a variety of communities that have taken the step in the direction of creating mask mandates in some sort, whether that's through ordinances or executive orders, whatever the case may be. And this evening, I just want to take a couple of minutes of your time to share similar reasons as to why we think a universal masking policy is necessary at this time. Those same reasons that those communities heard from their healthcare professionals are what we're going to cover this evening. So we want to start off with stating our community must come together to help slow the spread of COVID-19. And I want to first of all, thank the community of Seward for past efforts in this arena. Memorial Healthcare Systems and other organizations have tried to educate the community on our concerns around potential surges, growths, and positives. And a couple of items that we took upon with the community here during this time. One example is flu vaccines. We tried to do a very good job of educating the community how important it was to get your flu vaccines this year, and the communities responded greatly. We broke all our records. We give out more flu vaccine shots than we did at any other time in a very short period of time. So that just tells me the community does support and does have concern around this COVID-19 pandemic we're dealing with, because getting your flu shot just man. Because getting your flu shot just meant that we have less of a twin pandemic to deal with than we could be dealing with. As you know, the flu season is our busiest time. It creates the most hospitalizations throughout the state. If we can control that, then we can deal better with, um, COVID nineteen admissions, which we are starting to see big spikes in COVID nineteen admissions in hospitals. So I just wanted to make sure I, I made that point. Also, um, we've been involved with trying to do more education through social media. The Concordia, the schools, the city, the healthcare system started that effort and now through kind of economic developments helping with that as well. We've had a great number of businesses sign on to those short videos and get them pushed out on social media. We really think that makes a difference. And so we see the support that we get from our community in dealing with COVID nineteen and, and wanting to help us slow the spread of, of this disease. The rates of COVID nineteen infections have risen a great deal this fall in Seward County. Laura McDougal will give more, um, stats a little bit later. But I just want to give you just a couple of simple stats here from September, October, November. In September, we were averaging twenty-three, just about twenty-four positive cases per week in Seward County. In October, we jumped to one hundred and six positive cases per week. In November, we've come in at one hundred and forty-seven positive cases per week. And as we all understand, positive cases turn into hospitalizations. That can be five, six, seven percent of all positive cases will turn into an inpatient hospitalization. I'm talking about ER visit, I'm talking about an inpatient setting for care. And then there's a percentage on top of that that unfortunately creates a death. So as you can see, this trajectory that's going not only in our county, but across the entire state and the Midwest creates real problems, creates real concerns. The big topic out there that you've been hearing for the last few weeks, and definitely from the governor prior to, just prior to Thanksgiving, is hospitalizations and hospital capacity. That is definitely a statewide concern. It's obviously a hospital industry concern. We're very concerned in this industry of the future surge that we think is coming. A surge that will probably come around Christmas time. We just completed a surge here in November of hospitalizations. Now let me back up a little bit. Before we started this, dealing with that surge here in the late fall, I think I reported at a meeting in the past, and I think it was reported in the newspaper as well. That at that time, before the surge really started taking off in October, late October, there was six hundred and fifty hospitalizations. Meaning patients in beds that were dealing with COVID nineteen. We got through the surge and now we're sitting at a record nine hundred and eighty-seven is what surge created. As of tonight, we're sitting at nine hundred and seven across the state, which is a better number than nine eighty-seven, but it's a really poor number in comparison to six hundred and fifty. So, as we talk about trying to come up with ways to, to get that number down, what we're talking about is trying to find that padding again that we're going to need for the next surge. If we're sitting at nine hundred hospitalizations and we get the next surge like we just had, we were going to go past the Governor Ricketts' red threshold. And that red line threshold is the twenty-five percent, meaning twenty-five percent of all hospitals in the state of Nebraska, hospital beds in the state of Nebraska that are caring for COVID nineteen patients. When we get to that twenty-five percent and go higher, then he will put the most, um, complicated and most aggressive restrictions in play. And we're trying to avoid that. We being the whole industry, each community is trying to help out with that. Because what that means is shutdowns. That means is gatherings of ten people again, that means shutting down your bars where they can only do takeout food. Managing restaurants with much smaller groups, pretty similar to the stuff we saw back in the spring. We think with a mask mandate along with all these other things that we're doing in the area of helping with, uh, teaching people about social distancing. We have new treatment now, we have new treatment that we're starting, um, for, for high-risk patients to try to keep them from coming to the emergency room and being admitted. We think we need all those things in order to get our numbers of hospitalizations down in this state. Keep them down for when we have to deal with the surge that we feel is coming. Right now, I guess we have a chance to manage it locally. Because if we get to the twenty-five percent, the governor is going to manage it for us. And there's, I don't think there's any way around that. The industry has a real concern there because right now we think we're sitting at about twenty-two percent. We've seen a little bit of a, um, reduction at this point, but you know, Thanksgiving holiday, lot of gatherings. That's what's going to create it, the three Cs, that's what's going to create the potential surge. So we just think the mask mandate could really give us another defense mechanism to use in our efforts to not try to hit that red threshold, uh, which again would create a lot of, um, issues for businesses and so forth. We don't want to be in that boat either, because what happens when we get to that threshold, then we're going to be asked to start to stall some of our services. And we don't think that's good for the communities that we serve. Uh, we may not have a choice. As our capacity gets stretched, uh, we would be in a position of having to stall some services because we're going to need staff to help and, and take staff from other, other areas. So that's kind of what we're looking at as we're, we're, we're just hoping that we can, um, get from where we're at today to where we can start seeing the vaccine being used. Uh, the CDC just came out tonight with their final recommendations. Healthcare workers and long-term care residents would, uh, receive that first round of vaccine. And Laura McDougal and the groups in the four counties, um, this afternoon at a long meeting about how we will manage the distribution of that and receiving those vaccines. And we're hoping to see those by, by, um, mid-December. Uh, but it will take a long time for that to really take effect across the whole community because not everybody's going to qualify for those vaccines right away. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to come up with as many options as we can to keep people from getting ill enough to where they need to come into the emergency room, where they need to be admitted, where they need to be treated in a hospital bed, because that's just going to, going to cause a lot of problems. And so we're looking for help to get from, from the point where we're at now to where we can get more treatment and get more vaccine out and kind of take care of that. From an emergency room standpoint, I just want to give you a quick little note on that. For the month of November, just so you can get the feel for the activity that's going on. I already talked about the, the positive cases per week and how that's been going up. In the month of November, our emergency room, um, twenty-five percent of the total emergency room cases were COVID patients. They were needing COVID nineteen care. That's twenty-five percent of every ER, of all of our ER visits for the month of November. Forty-nine percent of those COVID patients required being admitted to either Memorial Hospital or a Lincoln facility. Half of the COVID nineteen patients that came into our ER were sick enough to have to be admitted into an inpatient setting. And folks, this is sad. We lost some of those people over this time. Laura McDougal will give you the stats on deaths. Fifty-one percent went home. But I hope that makes a point, you know, that we average around three twenty to three thirty ER visits a, a month. That tells you how many people were sick enough to be in a hospital bed. And so with that, I would like to just kind of end with, uh, our thoughts are adopting universal masking policies can help avert future lockdowns, especially if combined with other non-pharmaceutical interventions such as social distancing, hand hygiene, adequate ventilation and all the other things that you've heard. Memorial Healthcare Systems recommends a universal masking policy for the City of Seward, Nebraska. As healthcare professions, we serve the City of Seward, we implore you to help us slow the spread of COVID nineteen. And that document again has been signed off by all the physicians within Memorial Healthcare Systems and each of the physician assistants and myself. So with that, I thank you for giving me the time and the opportunity to express our thoughts around why we think a masking mandate can be beneficial to the community, not only from the healthcare side, but also from being, hopefully allowing the community to continue to operate and stay open. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Well, Roger, otherwise we'll continue and you can ask questions at the end if that's preferable given this format. So, seeing no one clamoring for a question, I'll go ahead and ask Laura if you'd like to add anything from Four Corners Health Department.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, um, for your time this evening and the opportunity to present some of the data to you and our Four Corners recommendations. I first want to start off by just, uh, explaining some of the data that.
Laura?
Yes.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure.
And then give us an address too, sorry.
No, thanks for reminding me. I just got, get going here, so, um, I'm, I'm Laura McDougal. I am with the Executive Director of the Four Corners Health Department. I, my address is Five Country Club Terrace in York, Nebraska. Uh, the Four Corners Health Department serves Butler Polk Seward and York Counties. Thank you. Uh, so I would like to start off with some, to, just to present some data and, um, to go over some, and I agree with everything Rick, or Roger presented. Um, November has seen a rise in new daily case totals for the Four Corners District and in Seward County. And Seward County actually has had the highest numbers and has the highest population of any county in our district. Our cumulative totals over the entire pandemic, Four Corners has had thirty, three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight cases. Seward County has had one thousand two hundred and sixty cases of the, that total, and that's as of, um, the twenty-seventh, November twenty-seventh, when I prepared this. Um, Seward County has had two hundred and seventy-nine new cases in the past two weeks, and one hundred and twenty of those were in the past week. So I think this next figure I'd like to give you, it is a district figure, but it, it, it's very telling as to what our experience has been in this pandemic. Um, in August, we had, on average, each week in August had thirty-nine new cases. In September, weekly, on average, we had fifty-nine new cases a week. And that is a one hundred and fifty-one percent increase over August. In October, we rose to two hundred and twenty-five new cases per week on average. And that was a three hundred and eighty-one percent increase over September. And as of here, the end of November, we have had four hundred and eleven, on average, new cases per week. That is a one hundred and eighty-three percent increase over October. Now I think that we're looking at that, we just, at this point, don't know what December holds, but if this pattern continues, this is not, this is completely working against us. We must reverse this trend. It's not sustainable to keep increasing like this in numbers, not for our hospitals, for our first responders, for our long-term care facilities, for our schools, our local businesses and our communities as a whole. And as Roger has talked about, our hospital system is stressed. Our state reached an all-time peak of nine hundred and eighty-seven COVID, COVID hospitalized patients on the twentieth of November. And as we move indoors this season, we expect continued numbers to be hospitalized. So looking at our numbers inside of our, um, spreadsheets that we hold on to at Four Corners, we know, and, and this has increased even since I did this number over the weekend, because we always get an influx of, of information on Mondays, but as of this weekend, we knew about more than seventy Four Corners residents who've been hospitalized so far just in November. Some have been cared for in our local critical access hospitals, some are transferred out of our district to higher levels of care. So we're not just, um, talking about our local hospitals, we're talking about all the hospitals in our region. Our district has had, at, as of my last press release, thirty-two COVID-related deaths with eight of them occurring in Seward County. And of the, that thirty-two deaths, thirteen of them have occurred in November, which is forty-two percent of the deaths so far. And we're going to see more reported in the coming weeks. I have a list of at least ten people who have died, who we sus, who we believe will have COVID on their death certificates on my whiteboard in my office. So, we, um, we cannot release the numbers until the death certificates are in, so there's always a couple of weeks lag time from a death till when we can report it. So, um, believe me, we have, we've had our share of deaths in November. The case fatality rate right now is at point nine percent for the district and for Seward County, it is at point six percent. So that's doing better than the rest of the district, but it's still with the eight deaths is a lot of deaths. And our, our positivity rate, our three-week rolling average right now is twenty point seven, which means that twenty, roughly twenty percent of all the tests that are being done right now, whether that's a small number, a bigger number of tests, there, it's at around twenty percent. So, um, that's a, that's a pretty high number. When we started this pandemic, we were at about one to three percent positivity rate. So I want to just reemphasize in this, I've submitted this letter to you, but I, I want to read some parts of it, um, to you, but we are cr, clearly right now at a critical juncture. If, as a community, we do not act locally and swiftly now, we will continue with uncontrolled spread of COVID nineteen, increased burden on our healthcare system and many deaths. According to the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, the SARS-CoV-2 COVID nineteen infection is transmitted predominantly by respiratory droplets generated when people cough, sneeze, sing, talk or breathe. The CDC recommends community use of masks to prevent the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Masks work in two different ways. First, they reduce the emission of virus-laden droplets, which is called source control, which is especially relevant for asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic infected wearers who feel well and may be unaware of their infectiousness to others and who are estimated to account for more than fifty percent of transmissions. Second, masks help reduce inhalation of these droplets by the wearer, filtration for personal protection. The community benefit of masking for SARS-CoV-2 control is due to the combination of these effects. Individual protection benefit increases with increasing numbers of people using masks consistently and correctly. In a report issued by the CDC on November tenth, they stated that cloth masks not only effectively block most large droplets, those that are twenty to thirty microns and larger, but they can also block the exhalation of fine droplets and particles, also referred to as aerosols, smaller than ten microns, which increase in number with the volume of speech and specific types of vocalization. Multi-layer cloth masks can both block up to fifty to seventy percent of these fine droplets and particles and limit the forward spread of those that are not captured. Upwards of eighty percent blockage has been achieved in human experience, experiments that have measured blocking of all respiratory droplets, with cloth masks in some studies performing on par with surgical masks as barriers for source control. The relationship between source control and personal protection is likely complementary and possibly synergistic. So that individual benefit increases with increasing community mask use, which is what we're talking about tonight. Adopting universal masking policies can help avert future lockdowns, especially if combined with other non-pharmaceutical interventions such as social distancing, hand hygiene and adequate ventilation. Masks are working in this pandemic and there's evidence, close to home. The University of Kansas Institute for Policy and Social Research evaluated the effectiveness of mask policies in Kansas counties, finding that counties with mask policies began seeing a decrease in cases about fourteen days after the policy went into effect. Followed by an oscillation of increases and decreases, but overall maintained at about twenty average new daily cases per one hundred thousand population. By comparison, the counties having no universal mask policies continue. population. By comparison, the counties having no universal mask policies continued with a steady increase in cases, and had nearly twice as many average new daily cases per 100,000 in counties with mask policies. So there are, at this point, over 40 studies which support the community use of masks, and we can provide those to you if you'd like. The science on the value of universal masking and prevention of the spread of COVID-19 is firm. The needed implementation of non-pharmaceutical prevention tools, including universal masking, is urgent. This call to action requires swift response in order to protect our community health, emergency, and safety services, as well as schools, childcare services, long-term care facilities, service organizations, and local workforce. Four Corners Health Department recommends a universal masking policy for the city of Seward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Laura. And I believe Dr. Ketner also was going to speak on behalf of Seward Memorial Health Systems. If Dr. Ketner could be unmuted, and then after Dr. Ketner, we will, I'll turn it over to Greg, and Greg will direct traffic from that point on. Okay, thank you, Dr. Ketner.
Hi, I'm JB Ketner. Can you guys all hear me? My address is 2562 Albow Road here in Seward. I've been a doctor here in Seward for 23 years, and I've been a physician for over 25 years, and I can tell you, I've never seen anything like this in my career. It's just, you know, words like unprecedented get thrown around, but this is just unbelievable from my standpoint. You know, I look at these numbers every day, you know, for the state, and then I look at Seward County's numbers, and we've oscillated in the last three or four weeks between, I express it always in hundred per hundred thousand, some people do it per million, but anywhere from 80 to 120 cases per 100,000. And to put that into perspective, we consider controlled spread 10 per 100,000. So we're eight to 12 times above that level of acceptable spread, and we're definitely seeing that. You know, Roger had alluded to it, but you know, this is a big part of my day. Every day, we are testing patients, we're in some cases exceeding our testing capacity. We have test Nebraska here, testing 80, 90, 100-plus people every week. We're dealing with people that we're trying to keep out of the hospital at home. It consumes a tremendous amount of resources. And as Roger said, we see a ton of people in the emergency room. We're admitting people to our hospital, are referring hospitals, you know, like UNMC and BRIAN and St. ECHI. They're full. I talk to those hospitalists on a routine basis, and I ask them, I say, how are you doing on bed capacity? And they're boarding patients in the emergency room because they do not have rooms. And by rooms, I don't mean they don't have physical room, they don't have staff, because this is a dual problem. You know, having rooms in a hospital without nursing staff particularly, you might as well have a hotel. You need nursing staff, you need respiratory therapists, you need physicians. And part of the problem with this pandemic is we're losing our providers at the same time that we need more providers than we've ever needed before. And we're really at a spot where we can overwhelm the healthcare system, and that has huge implications. And you think, oh, it's just, you know, it's going to look like New York City with, you know, people that can't get into the hospital, but you're just thinking about COVID. People don't stop having heart attacks, they don't stop having car accidents, they don't stop having strokes just because COVID is happening. And that's a big problem for us, because, you know, a patient has a massive heart attack, I can't fix that in Seward, Nebraska. I need to get them to a higher level of care. When COVID has sucked all the air out of the room and all the resources out of the room, those patients suffer. It's not just about COVID. Everything else doesn't stop. I mean, we can stop elective surgeries, and we can stop doing preventive care, but, you know, we can't stop emergencies from happening, and that's, that really impacts that care. And, you know, I've lost patience to that, and it's heartbreaking to me. And I have people say things like, oh, they were older patients, or they had underlying health conditions. And yeah, I get that, but they didn't need to die. This was preventable on some level. And I realize that masks won't prevent every single case of COVID, but universal masking reduces those numbers, and that's what we need. I don't think we're going to get rid of COVID for a long time, but we need to be throwing everything at this problem that we can, because this is like an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. Those of you that know me, and several of you are my patients, I am not an alarmist guy, and I am freaked out. I've never seen anything like this. And I think we just need to pull everything out of the toolbox that we have at this point. You know, masks decrease transmission. Laura alluded to that, but we just got to get those numbers down. And I'm asking, I'm asking for help. I don't do that very easily, but I, we need help. All my partners would tell you the exact same thing. The doctors at UNMC and BRIAN and ECHI, they would tell you the same thing. We're overwhelmed, we're tired, we can't, this is unsustainable. So we're just asking for help. We got to get those numbers down.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ketner. Turn it over to Greg now, if you want to direct traffic.
All right. Members of the public that are joining us, go ahead, and if you would like to speak, we probably have seven or eight in the queue right now. Message me if you have access to messaging or the chat. Message the city of Seward, and let me know who you are or what your tag is on your, your video tag on your Zoom, so I know who to unmute. And we're going to walk our way through these. At the end, as the mayor explained at the beginning of the meeting and the beginning of this item, there are some of you that are participating or listening by phone. We're going to unmute everybody once I get through the queue, and we've kind of finished up, and I'll unmute everyone and see if there's anyone left that would like to speak in regards to this item. So the first person I have up is Tobin Beck. And I believe when I unmute you, you'll have to do it also on your end. So there we go.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm Tobin Beck, 2325 Star Street, and I want to start off by saying thank you to Laura, Roger, Dr. Ketner, all of the healthcare professionals here in Seward for the great tireless work that you're doing. It's deeply appreciated. I figured out today that I've, besides growing up here in Seward, I've lived here a total of 36 of my 67 years, and I love Seward, I love Nebraska. I consider all of you and the people here in town to be friends and neighbors. I teach political science, I teach journalism and writing, and one of the courses I teach is American Government at Concordia. And in that class, we talk about how, first of all, the Bible calls on us to look out for our neighbors' welfare as well as our own. But we also talk about then how our government is set up. It's set up to protect individual rights, which is important. We'll be talking about that tonight, the importance of the rights of the individual, but also government is set up to protect and secure the common good. And particularly in times of emergency, like we're in right now, there are balancing tests between these competing rights, the rights of the individual, the rights of the common good. As Laura mentioned, the big problem here is coronavirus is spread by air, by droplets in air, and particularly, as the CDC said on November 20th, that more than 50% of coronavirus infections are spread by people who don't know they're sick. If you don't know that you're sick and you're not wearing a mask, you may well intend that you're, you know, that you don't want to infect anyone, but you won't know that, that you may be infected yourself, but not yet be symptomatic. That really speaks for the need for a mask requirement for people, hopefully, who would be doing this already, but in the face of many people who are not, that it is, it is very important that the council pass a mask ordinance. We have a pandemic that is not contained, and in a situation like this, government not only has the right, but it has the duty and the obligation to act for the public good, for the public safety. And also, as I alluded to with what we talk about in my classes, about what the Bible says about consideration of our neighbors, this is also something to do for consideration of our neighbors, for the consideration of each other. So again, I love Seward, I consider all of you as friends and neighbors. I respect your views, these are my views. So again, thank you very much.
All right. We have about eight people in the queue right now, and the next one I have up is Jerry Rumery. Let me, Jerry, I just clicked over, so you'll probably need to unmute on your end. There we go. Are you there?
Yes, let me turn my video on here. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the mask ordinance that's proposed. I'd like to speak as a small business owner. My name is Jerry Rumery, 1540 North First Street. Sorry about that, here in Seward. I would like to speak as a small business owner, and how masks and what we've experienced with masks. Early on in the pandemic, I can't remember which, it's either April or May, we implemented a mandatory mask in our business for anybody entering into the building, for all employees in the buildings, and employees in vehicles. So if we can't, and outside, if we can't keep six-foot spacing, if we can keep, you know, more spacing, we have, we've allowed the masks to come off. You know, and we've done that out of precaution for our employees, we've done that out of precaution for our customers and their families, and we've wanted to try to do what's right. I'm also, my spouse is immunocompromised, and that also has led, you know, to take every precaution that we can. As of today, we have had no positive tests from any of our employees so far through this, and if they've been positive, it's been asymptomatic, but no positive tests. And we often get thanked by our customers that come in, that say, thank you for making people wear masks. We feel safe. I just had that happen on Saturday. And so as a small business, and every small business is unique to its own, but in our situation, it's worked, it's worked well, and I do support the mandate. I would also like to speak, I'm also the vice president of the school board, and also like to briefly speak about what we've done at the schools. We implemented, when the kids returned, a mandatory mask in the buildings, and we have very low community spread at the schools. I think it's 0.6-ish for community spread. We have quarantining, I think between 6% and 10% of students quarantining. And so, you know, we said to keep schools going, we need to have masks in schools, and it's worked. And I think we can look at it the same way in business and in society. We need to keep, we need to do for our neighbor, we need to keep each other healthy, and we need to help each other, and do what's right. That's who we are as citizens, that's who we are as Nebraskans and Americans. And so I just wanted to give my support for the ordinance, and hopefully, you know, we can take the right steps forward. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. I will note, and it was forwarded on to the city council, I know we have Dr. Fields with us, but as Jerry alluded, we did receive a letter from the superintendent of schools in support of the ordinance tonight, and that was distributed to the city council earlier today. So the next one I have up is Jesse Brimmer. And I'll see if I can find, we have quite a number of people on here, so I will have to scan until I find. Oh, there we go. Jesse, you'll need to unmute on your end. There you go. Are you available? Jesse, are you with us? Jesse Brimmer. And I think we may have lost that one, but we'll keep, I don't hear it coming back on. So we will keep you in the queue, and I'll just move on to the next one, and then we'll come back and see if we get our technical issue fixed. Make sure when you're on, that after I push unmute, you'll have to unmute yourself as well on your end. If you're participating through your computer app or otherwise, if you're on phone, it would be star six, but most of you that are texting me or chatting with me probably are using an app or your phone. So we'll skip Jesse for the moment. The next one I have is Zach Soflin. I found Zach. Zach, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I'm Zach Soflin. I'm at 1528 238th Road, and I've lived in Seward all my life, raised my family here. We've got four little kids, and we love Seward. Seward is and always will be our home. I wanted to weigh in on the ordinance for this, but first of all, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of state that I really appreciate being able to have these types of civil discussions, and I love being able to have these decisions and discussions locally as well. COVID is obviously a really serious, legitimate virus, and it's definitely something that's, that's a danger to everyone in our community. So I want to first kind of acknowledge that, but I want to, I want to say that, in my view, and what was kind of alluded to earlier, personal responsibility and personal liberty, I think, is a really important concept in the United States. Individuals are responsible for their personal health, not businesses, churches, cities, or states. And I believe Nebraskans are common sense people who take responsibility for themselves and their actions. I think a great, a great example of this is the most recent kind of spike in daily cases that we saw, including the spike in hospitalizations that we saw just recently. I think we hit, we hit our peak about two weeks ago, in that, at least for the, for the state of Nebraska. And what you saw, without any, without any major additions, additional restrictions or mandates, statewide mandates, or even local mandates here, or changes in Lincoln or other major cities, otherwise, we saw those cases go back down. So the exponential spike that was happening in both daily cases and hospitalizations began to recede. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that Nebraskans are able to take personal precautions to protect themselves and their families when they feel like they're in danger. And so in my view, it's not the city's job to do that for them. You can, you can again see this from the trends in daily cases and hospitalizations, as the representatives for Memorial Healthcare and Four Corners alluded to earlier, we have come off of our peak, on this most recent peak. I understand that, like, the concern here is that we want to anticipate the next peak as cases begin to recede right now. But again, I think what needs to be considered here is that we're Nebraskans, we're common sense people, and I think that as citizens of Nebraska, we take responsibility for ourselves and our own personal health. So I'd like to add to that, I think that, I think that there's, and I mean, there's probably going to be a lot of this for everybody, you know, anyone who's weighing in. We all have numbers we can point to. I totally understand that. But I would say a good comparison to kind of look at at the effectiveness of masks and really just overall restrictions in general is a comparison between the state of Florida and the state of California. There's always, always factors that affect the, you know, the daily cases in either, in either spot. Obviously, there's differences between them, but if we're looking at them in the last, in the last, I think, three weeks, the peak kind of seven-day average in cases per 100,000 was about 36 in both states. So 36 cases per 100,000 in California and in Florida. Florida does not have a mandatory mask mandate. In fact, their governor is In fact, their governor is putting in executive orders to restrict localities from requiring masks across their state. California, on the other hand, has some of the most restrictive measures in our nation. And at a cases-per-100,000 level, you're looking at almost the exact same daily case peak in the last couple of weeks. And I think that, that trend is consistent over, over the last couple of months for both of those states. So I think that there's, again, there's, there's numbers that all of us can point to, but I think that is a really good comparison that we need to consider. Is this worth mandating across our city? Or should we allow people to be responsible for their own health and their own care, for that matter? And I would, I would say we should let people be responsible for their own personal health. I would also just like to add that for the city to obligate a private business to enforce their patrons' compliance of a city ordinance, including determining like if the mask is being worn over their nose, you know, worn properly, or even getting into determining whether or not a medical exemption is real or accurate or not, I think puts our small business owners in a, in a really bad position. In a year that is probably unlike any other, as far as difficulty goes for our small businesses. I think that we're putting a lot of our small businesses into a, a bad position when it comes to that. So I think that's, that's all I have. I appreciate the, the time and the ability to speak to this and look forward to further discussion. So.
And council members, you as well can, if you need me to wave at me or flag me, if you have a question for somebody as they come up, we'll go ahead. And I'm going to read off just some of the names I have next. We're going to go, try to go with Bremer, which is Jesse next. Then we'll have Hemseth, Grosshands, Wake, Ideas, Robbins, Hill. And then we'll move on through the list from there. Let's see. And we have another one there. So let's go with Jesse Bremer. Let's see. Jesse, are you there? Still nothing on your audio. See if your microphone picks up. We'll keep working with Jesse. I will leave her in the queue. Alan Hemseth, Alan, if you're still with us, there we go. I see Alan. Alan, are you there? Try again. I think sometimes people, when they use their iPhones, they jump off or they accidentally close. Oh, there's Alan again. He's moving around on my screen. Alan, you'll unmute on your end. Oh, there he was. He had, you just had it, Alan.
There we go. Sorry about that. Evening. I'm Alan Hemseth. I live at 333 South Ninth Street here in Seward. I've been here, I just recently moved back in 2018, so this is my hometown. Graduated, graduated high school. I was born in Memorial, up there in Memorial. I just wanted to chime in on this mandatory mask mandate. I work, I'm not going to specify where I work at, but I work with over-the-road truckers. I come in contact, close contact with every one of them that go all over the nation. I have yet to have anybody that I know of come in contact or test positive for COVID or anything else. So this mandate, mandatory mask mandate is, to me, is a little bit ridiculous because I have yet to see any cases come through the shop or anything. And even hear anything positive about masks besides restriction of your breathing and just recirculating the carbon dioxide that you breathe out. I saw tonight on Four Corners website that the hospitalizations for Seward was only 73. So I'm kind of like confused on how there's a big scare about hospitalizations when the Four Corners website has 73 cases, hospitalizations. And as far as wearing a mask, I mean, I read on the, the, the list of everything that they were talking about using for masks, we were going from everything from scarves to bandanas to cloth masks to actual surgical masks. I don't see how a scarf is equal to a surgical mask or an N95, which is the recommended mask to be worn to prevent the particles, the microscopic particles from being passed on from person to person. I also agree with Zach, how he said Nebraskans are common sense individuals where we should be looking out for ourselves. Yes, I agree, we should look out for the rest of the community and practice at least social distancing where needed be. But I don't see where mandated, mandating by the city council or anybody else that we need to wear masks is logical. Governments should not be intruding into our personal lives like they, like it's trying to do everywhere else. Everybody in Seward that I've known my entire life, I mean, everybody in Nebraska that I've known my entire life, and I said, we're common sense people, and I don't agree to this mask mandate. I can go on and on about it, but I just, I got five minutes, and I don't want to chew up a lot of everybody else's time. I want to speak on this matter, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Alan. The next one I have up, we're going to, I'm going to try one more time. Where'd you go? I'd still be working on it. We'll keep going through my queue. The next one I have up is Elliot Grosshands. Let's see. Elliot, are you there?
Yeah, how you doing?
Good.
All right, cool. That's good. I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Like, like somebody said earlier, I think it's pretty cool. We all get to do this. Somebody also said earlier, we're Nebraskans, we're very resilient. We can do anything that we set our minds to do. And one of those things is thinking for ourselves and personal hygiene. I think that the key to this disease from just an outsider looking in is really up to yourself. Don't touch your eyes. Don't touch your nose. Don't touch your mouth. The simple things. Keep your hands clean. Do the, do the little things. And if we do the little things, there's no reason for anybody to tell us that we have to wear a mask to go into someplace. That is infringing on our rights, whether you want to say it or not. I mean, it is. You're, that we're being forced to do something that we may or may not agree with. And it's simply not anybody's decision to tell us otherwise. I mean, that is, that's the beauty of America, and that's the beauty of where we live today, is for that choice. And for a lot of people, they feel that that choice is getting taken from them. And I would say arguably, the core issue for me, and I feel that a lot of people in Seward are believers in Christ, and if you believe, you know that He determines when we are going to leave this earth. So mask or no mask, vaccine or no vaccine, it really depends on Him, if you believe. And if not, that's cool. So I respect everybody's views, and I'm just looking for people to respect mine and make it, let it be my choice. It is my body, and it should be my choice. It is as simple as that. And three out of four people that I know in my immediate family that have had COVID-19 wore masks. Three out of the four wore it and still got it. So my personal experiences are, it's no, the government shouldn't tell us to mandate it. You know, that's not their position. And I also see a fine of like $500 if you violate it. I don't know if that's true or not, but we are literally dealing with a pandemic, and people are already having a hard enough time the way it is. And yet, you're going to go give somebody a $500 fine because they didn't wear a mask? And yet, that mask hung from their rearview window since March? So, I mean, that's even more a kick, kicking somebody down is to give them a ticket because they didn't put on a mask. And you say, "Oh, it's just a mask. Just put it on. It's no big deal." Well, it is a big deal because it's still my body, and it should be my choice. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Elliot, real quick, just to confirm, address, is it PO Box 283?
Yep.
Thank you.
That's here in Seward.
Thank you very much, Elliot. Next I have, oh, I think, we're going to try Jesse again. Jesse, are you with us? We can hear you.
I'm with you. There we go. Sorry about. Okay, my name is Jesse Bremer. I live at 1243 Augusta Drive here in Seward. And my family and I were fortunate enough to move out here 13 years ago. And we decided we wanted to raise our family away from Lincoln and some of the side effects of being there. And we have really enjoyed it, and we have been thankful that Seward has had to offer. And one of the things we've been most proud of lately is Seward's freedom to be personally responsible for the decision as to whether or not to wear a mask. We feel that it is a personal decision. Everyone is going to handle their medical choices individually. You can go to a doctor, and he can tell you to eat right, but he can't take you home and make salad for you. And this is a very similar thing. Doctors are going to recommend a lot of things, but to eat and how they choose to manage their healthcare. I find it a little suspect that the healthcare facility here in Seward is very concerned about how patients are being treated and their availability to treat them. As I basically know a family member who went to the clinic to be treated, attempted to, and was turned away because they had symptoms similar to COVID. They did not have COVID. They were seen just a week or so prior for symptoms related to a sinus infection, but were turned away and told they would see them if they got much worse. I feel like turning away patients who need care for COVID-like symptoms is a good way to increase the numbers in a hospital. When we're telling people we won't see them until they get much sicker, we are either basically forcing their hand to go to somebody else's ER, which then inundates another person's ER with a basic illness, or they're going to go home until they do get sicker. And then by the time they come back, they do need hospitalization. So we could prevent some of these hospitalizations. The clinic opens themselves up and treating people regularly. So I do find it a little odd that they are so concerned about their availability to treat the community when they are in fact turning away people who do need treatment. I believe, as Zach said, the numbers from October to November have gone down. And those are what I noted from Laura at the Health Department as well. So if we are on a downward tick, there is nothing to guarantee that we are all of a sudden going to see a surge in December. I think we all can agree that it was expected surge once schools reopened and everything started to go back to normal. Because then you keep people in their homes for months at a time. They obviously don't have an opportunity to share or transmit a virus because they're not going anywhere. When you send them back to school for the first time in six months, they're inundated with germs. It's the same as when you send the kid to daycare for the first time. They catch everything because their body hasn't been exposed to it yet. This is what's expected to happen. If you speak with anybody from the school, they said the same thing. They expected that there was going to be a high number of cases because the kids were coming back, being around kids for the first time in six months. The same applies to the city of Seward. Cases have gone up. Also, it's cold and flu season. The numbers in the hospital, I'd kind of be interested to hear what emergency room numbers are like at this time of the year during a regular cold and flu season. What are the number of cases in the ER for those type of symptoms? How many of those symptoms end up on hospitalizations? Are they drastically higher this year than they were last year during cold and flu season? Those are all things that I think need to be taken into consideration because there was not this type of conversation for a mask last year as there is this year. And I think at the end of the day, it goes down to personal responsibility. We can't for someone to do something. That's not the government's job. While I respect the position of healthcare workers and the Health Department, when the government starts adhering to the pressure of businesses over the constituents, it's a slippery slope. The government is for the people, not for the business. And at the end of the day, Memorial Healthcare Systems and the Forensics Department are businesses. And to be treated as such, they shouldn't be the primary source of how the government makes their decisions. So I appreciate everything everybody has done here, and I appreciate all the voices. And I just thank you for this opportunity. But I ask that you please consider the freedom of choice that we appreciate so much and that us continue to have that choice and to not be treated as criminals when we take a different approach than other people do. Thank you.
Max Wake, you're up next.
Good evening, Max Wake, 136 North Columbia Avenue. Thanks for the opportunity to comment this evening. I am concerned about the significant increase in the cases and hospitalizations. As Roger Reamer and Laura McDougall and Dr. Kettner described, I think these trends are pretty troubling. And, you know, they're very different from the trends we saw in the spring and in the summer. It's a, they're very concerning to me. I'm concerned about the impact on the health of our citizens, especially the most vulnerable citizens, but also the ability to keep kids in school and to keep businesses open and operating with a minimum of disruption. As Roger Reamer noted, the potential of much more restrictive directed health measures are on the horizon. I'm concerned about the healthcare workers, the EMTs, the other essential workers who are put under tremendous pressure in this current situation. I'm also so thankful for their efforts to take care of all of us. What a, what a gift they give to each of us. I also think currently we have a somewhat inconsistent approach across the city that potentially creates unnecessary confusion for business, employees, and, and customers. So when I think about this, how do we decide what we might do? Well, I believe we should rely on the recommendations from public health officials and local healthcare professionals. They are trained, experienced, and prepared to provide guidance. They've planned for pandemics for many, many years. They have access to the best resources and information. They have access to the best resources and information. They're the experts, and I trust their judgment to advise us. So I appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight and to express my support for the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Next I have Kristi Ideas. And I will have to track Kristi down on here. I also need to check if Kristi's using somebody else's phone. Let's see. Let's see, Kristi. Oh, there she is. Kristi, are you with us? Kristi? Kristi Ideas. All right, we're gonna go ahead. I will keep you in the queue, Kristi. And we'll see if we can figure out what we have, because it shows you're unmuted on my end. So I will jump to the next one, then we'll come back to Kristi. The next one after that is Jennifer Robbins. And Jennifer, I think I know which one's you, but I'm just gonna make sure here real quick. All right. I think I got Jennifer one second here. Jennifer, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having me, and good evening, everybody. I'll try to make this short and sweet. Thank you so much to our overburdened, stressed-out healthcare workers, Dr. Kettner, and all of us, all of you people. It's just, I mean, the stress that you're under, I cannot even imagine. So thank you for keeping our community above water. I know it cannot be an easy job, and I just thank you. To touch on some bases that I caught tonight, I hear a lot about common sense and that Nebraskans have common sense. That's a nice concept, but our numbers are not showing it. The bottom line is this, our state is ranked number five in this, in our nation among the highest number of cases. This proves that we are not, as Nebraskans, being responsible, nor showing that we have common sense. Jessie made the analogy that when you go to a doctor and he tells you to eat healthy, and you choose not to follow those orders, that maybe you're right. But that analogy would affect you directly. It's not putting other people at risk. A more, let me say, a better analogy to Jessie's going to a doctor would be smoking in public, which is now against the law in the state of Nebraska. Why is it against the law? Because we all know now that secondhand smoke directly puts other people at risk. It kills people. Just like COVID-19 kills people. So there's a lot of conspiracy theories I'm hearing even tonight based on masks not impacting your ability to breathe or carbon monoxide. Baloney, guys, that's baloney. There's conspiracy theories and opinions, and then there's facts and stats. And the facts and stats support science, and the science supports and shows that masks work. We need to get a hold of this. Communities all across Nebraska are starting to do what's right in implementing mask mandates because the science shows, guys, it works. Our schools, prime example, you can't argue that. With rights comes responsibilities, and it's high time that we start being responsible. But guess what? People are showing that they're not doing that. Do you know how many friends I have that are no longer giving their business, myself included, to businesses in Seward who do not require masks? They are going to communities that require masks. Seward is losing business. I just wanna say, you guys know what's right. And I really hope that you do enforce this mandate because it's needed. And we all know it's needed, whether we want to admit it or not. And like Dr. Kettner said, people are dying unnecessarily. Yes, we're all gonna die, yes, we all have a time. I'm a Christian too, but does that mean that I'm gonna go out and not be a good Samaritan? Being a good Christian is caring about your brothers and sisters in Christ. That's just how I feel. Thank you for your time.
Jennifer, can I get your address for the record?
445 North Forest Street in Seward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Few things to reiterate. Reminder, if I select you to speak, you'll have to, I'll unmute you, you'll have to unmute yourself as well. That was one of my reminders. We have a five-minute speaking limit. The other thing is, is we noted, we hit our 100-person maximum. And so you might have saw me typing. I just upped the city system through Zoom, and hopefully we should be able to go up to 500 now. So if you have any friends or anybody that are text messaging you or otherwise that they couldn't get on, please let them know to retry, and we'll see if we can add people. I know we're over 101 now, so I think it works. At least they billed me for it. So we'll, we'll continue to get people into the meeting and make sure that anybody that has an opportunity to speak does. So I'll run through the queue right now. Next, we're gonna try Kristi Ideas again. I think she'll be on Ryan. Then we'll have Hill, Kale, Pollock, Hobson, and Schmidt are the ones I have in the queue, and there might be more coming. But we'll go ahead. Kristi, I'm gonna try and find you on Ryan's computer. I see Ryan's computer, let's see if that works. Kristi, are you there? Kristi Ideas, are you available? I heard something.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, thank you.
All right. I'm Kristi Ideas, 1990 Rainbow Avenue here in Seward. I am questioning the constitutionality of an ordinance of this nature as it intrudes on our freedoms and rights as individuals of the United States of America. Our freedoms and rights are guaranteed by both our federal and state constitutions, and they should not be infringed upon by our governments at the local or state levels. Other measures have been taken to achieve the same desired results, and I'm fine with those measures staying in place. I'm not fine with local government telling me and my family what we have to wear on our face to enter any public establishment. This is a prime example of government overreach. At the beginning of this meeting, the council members took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. As was stated in a previous city council meeting where citizens and business owners spoke against a mask mandate, and businesses said what one would do to their businesses. They're already struggling with the current situation, and a mask ordinance will now make it so people won't enter their establishments, making business even harder for them. I know that Four Corners Health Department is putting the pressure on local government and asking all towns and its districts to implement a mask mandate. But I'm asking Seward to follow what Strongspur did and told Four Corners Health Department, they will not implement a mask mandate as the people in town are adults and they can make their own decisions on their own. We live in America where we have freedoms, and it's not the city's leaders or the government's jobs to tell people to wear a mask. This is my hometown, and I applauded them for this decision and told them I wish more towns would stand up against the Health Department and their power trip. Governor Ricketts is still against a statewide mask mandate and also against local governments implementing one. Cities and states that have a mask mandate, the numbers are continuing to go up, proving the masks don't work. As he has said, we need to leave space for grace, meaning don't implement a mask mandate or ordinance. I agree with him on this and feel this is not what Seward needs. The enforcement provisions being put in place with this ordinance include up to a $500 fine and possible jail time if you can't pay that fine. So now we're adding this to something our police department needs to enforce. We're telling citizens of Seward it's okay to turn your neighbor in, turn your friend in, or anyone else they see in town not wearing a mask. So now we'll make Seward a tattletale town. Doesn't our police and law enforcement have enough to do without having to issue citations on mask violators? By law, a person with a health or medical exemption can't be asked what the condition is or proof of said condition. So how will those violators be treated and determined? During this time of year, when people are already struggling with the effects of what the DHMs have done since March, do we really want to infringe on their freedoms even more? Do you want to hurt the businesses in town even more than they are hurting now with the current state DHMs? So we want people being arrested for not wearing a mask? Really, is this what Seward will become? This has been a hard enough year for everyone in town, and we don't need to make it worse by having a mask ordinance. There are people in our town who have a health, mental, or other condition that makes it so they can't wear a mask. Yes, I know in the ordinance there's a health exemption clause, but a lot of businesses won't allow the health exemption for entry if an ordinance is put in place. This means some people may not be able to go to work, they won't be able to walk into a store to buy groceries or clothing or household supplies. By adding a mask mandate, you will be infringing on the few rights those people have left. You will make it so they won't want to leave their homes because they won't be able to enter stores or businesses, or they won't want to deal with the shaming that people in our town do to those who can't wear a mask. Those of us with the health exemption are already dealing with enough of these issues when we go out in public, and a mask mandate and ordinance is only going to make it worse. What this means for me is I will take my business out of town. I will gladly go back to my hometown and do my grocery shopping because I can do it there and not be shamed for not wearing a mask. I won't be yelled at by people in the stores who see me without a mask on. The public shaming will increase dramatically with a mask ordinance put in place. And until you've walked in the shoes of those of us who can't wear a mask, you can't say the shaming isn't that bad or it won't get worse. Trust me, it's bad enough already, and it will get worse. The last time I checked, my address was in the United States of America, the land of the free, where we are free from government overreach. Our constitution is our permission slip and reminder of our freedom from government overreach. My family members fought for those freedoms, and our government now is taking those freedoms away without any thought as to what they're doing and the damage they are doing by infringing on our freedoms. As I stated at the last council meeting where a mask ordinance came up, I said it's not the government's job to protect my health, that is my job and mine alone. This is a virus that has to run its course. You can't stop it, you can't hide from it. It's been proven again and again that masks don't work to control the spread. You want to implement a mask ordinance for a virus that has a 94% and higher recovery rate. If people are scared or at risk with a compromised immune system, then they can wear a mask. Just because some people are scared of COVID-19, it is unconstitutional to force everyone to lose their freedoms to make those who are scared feel safe. In closing, I am not in favor of this ordinance and would respectfully, respectfully request that this council vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. I see, I'm gonna go ahead and recognize her, Mayor. Councilmember Beck has her hand up. Ellen, I believe you'll have to unmute yourself as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'd just like to ask, the previous speaker mentioned a lot about your constitutional rights. So what constitutional right or rights are being violated with an ordinance that requires you for public safety purposes to wear a mask?
Ellen, I just wanna make a clarification, and you can nod or, do you mean Kristi Ideas? Is that the previous speaker you meant? Okay, I'm gonna, Kristi, if you can stay on Ryan's computer, I'm gonna unmute you again.
Okay, what was your, what was your question, Ellen?
I'll unmute Ellen as well.
You mentioned, this was a constitutional issue. So what in the constitution is being violated? What specific right in the US Constitution is being violated by government implementing a mask ordinance for public health?
You're infringing on our freedoms, telling us what we have to wear in town out in public.
What in the constitution is that a violation of?
You're not a constitutional lawyer. This is a violation of our freedoms that are given under the constitution.
You are making the statement that it's a violation of the constitution, and I'm asking you, what is it that's being violated?
My freedom and everyone else's freedom.
What in the constitution?
Hold on, Ellen. I can see our distinguished city attorney is waving at us. Unmute yourself there, Kelly.
This is not a question and answer session. I'm sorry. That is not, this is not the appropriate forum for a question and answer session. If we get into a public debate, we'll be here all night. It is not the appropriate time and place for questions and answers.
Kelly, this is, could you just clarify as far as our ability as a city, a first-class city in Nebraska to enact such an ordinance? Is there any concern with that regarding the constitutionality?
I don't have any concern. I think we clearly have the authority to enact ordinances that promote the health and safety and well-being of your citizens. And that's set forth in state statute, that's set forth in your ordinances. And I'm not aware of any successful constitutional challenges in that regard yet in the state of Nebraska.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Greg, you on to the next speaker, please?
Yes, Mayor. The next one I have is, I believe, Kirsten Hill. Am I got that wrong? Kirsten, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, my name is Kirsten Hill. I live at 1599 Augusta Drive. I have three brief points. The first is that I have already contacted one of my city council people several weeks ago and asked for the council to please consider a mask mandate. I'm one of the many people who live in Seward who are immunocompromised. And I just personally come to the council to ask that you please pass this ordinance to protect those who live in our community, who would like to go out and shop and buy gas and get groceries and those sorts of things in a manner that is, that is a little bit more safe. And a mask mandate will help to protect everyone in our community. The second concern that I have is that it seems as though the state has decided not to step up and pass their own mask mandate, and so unfortunately this falls on the cities. And I appreciate that the city of Seward and the city council is considering stepping up. My big concern with the issue that the governor has raised is this magic number of hospitalizations. My big concern with hospitalizations is that hospitalizations are a trailing indicator, not a leading indicator. By the time our communities hit the red line, it will be too late to help keep our hospitals and our healthcare system from being overburdened. So things like a mask mandate, at this point, even though you may think the numbers are going backwards a little bit or whatever, a mask mandate at this point helps to keep us from getting closer to that red line where it is too late. And it would help to keep people healthier in the city of Seward. My final point is that tonight we have heard, I think, very rational, reasonable, reasonable, both scientific and personal requests from the head of our hospital, from the head of our county health department, our four-county health department, and from one of our town's favorite physicians, Dr. Kettner. And they're pleading with us as a city to please do something, to please help them. And I think that a mask mandate is the least that we can do to help our healthcare professionals in the city of Seward to keep one another safe. And I just hope that the city council will vote for the mask mandate, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Kirsten, before you go, can I get your address?
Yeah, 1599 Augusta Drive.
Thank you. Next I have, I wanna make a note because it was on my list here. The city of Seward, specifically myself, but I think some of these went around to council members and also the mayor, we received an upwards of nearly 150 emails directed to various elements of the council. Everything that was sent on to me or forwarded to the mayor, and then from the mayor to myself, was placed into a packet this afternoon, leading up till about 5 o'clock. We may have gotten even more after that time point. We may have gotten even more after that time point. I put all of those emails into a packet, scanned it, and sent it to all members of the council and the mayor and shared those with them. Those emails included both emails in favor and in opposition. And so if you did email, probably before 5 o'clock for sure, your emails were passed on to the council members, and I shared that, all that information with them. So there was a substantial number of personally-written emails by citizens from across the city. So I had a number of people ask about that on the chat here. So I wanted to remind everybody that those did make it to the council today. Next, I have Nancy. And I think Nancy's doing something there. Nancy Cale, are you available? And you might have to unmute yourself, too. Oh, Nancy's still going. Nancy, you'll have to unmute yourself on your end after I've unmuted you as well. Do it one more time.
Okay. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I would agree with all those people that have spoke before me that we need a mask mandate. You have all seen me before at one of your council meetings promoting the idea of a mask mandate. Since COVID-19 has begun, Seward County has had more than 1,260, oh, I'm sorry, as of 6:00 PM, which was 12 hours from when I got that information, we now have 1,294 cases, 34 more cases in just one day. A thousand of those cases are still considered to be active, not cured. Oh, with 71 hospitalizations. Oh, no, that statistic's also changed. It's now 73 hospitalizations in the 12 hours from last night when I checked and today when I checked. And this is all, of course, according to the Four Corners Health website. Just in the past 14 days, Seward County has had 230 cases. And as you probably already know, for the past three weeks, the COVID risk gauge or dial thing has been in the red category, severe risk. I myself am in the high-risk category with having type 2 diabetes, trauma from the death of my spouse to lung cancer, and me being over 65. So I hit that category of high risk. And I don't believe my family could stand another death of both Dennis and myself within the same year. Thus, I haven't shopped in Seward most of the summer and this fall. Because sometimes, 2/3 of the customers, when I had shopped in local businesses, were not wearing masks, and I can't risk it. Seward County has had a total of just eight deaths. And five of those, however, were just in the last 10 days. What if those deaths had been your brother, or your daughter, or your mother, or your grandparents? At the October 20th city council meeting, I proposed some sort of mask mandate, or at least encouraging mask-wearing in all Seward businesses. But our Seward council, our city council, did nothing. And many of those 2,494 people that have had COVID-19 are still having lingering effects. And some of them may live their entire lives with these effects of having had COVID-19. I think of wearing a mask as similar to the requirement that most businesses have, that you aren't allowed in the business unless you're wearing shoes and a shirt. So how is mask-wearing any different, except in the case that you may be talking life versus death if you don't wear a mask? I believe it is your duty as elected officials to protect our citizens, you and me and your neighbors and your friends, and to require the wearing of masks. Too many people have the thought that if I wear a mask, then I'm protected and nobody around me then needs to wear a mask. And that is the biggest problem we have in our community, is that misconception that if I wear a mask, then I'm protected. Well, I'm not protected because your germs, your COVID-19 droplets are circulating throughout all of the air and they're getting all over my clothing. And they're getting on my hands. And many people don't even know that they have COVID because for several days before the symptoms appear, you are contagious. And too many people don't have that information that is readily out there but aren't willing to accept. And I have to admit, it's probably taking away a freedom. But it's, what does that freedom give you if your neighbor or your friend dies because you thought you had to have your freedom? Thank you very much. It's been an enjoyable time again.
Nancy, can I get your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. 1899 North Fourth Street here in Seward.
Thank you. Oh. Sorry, I didn't cut Nancy off, but I think we're okay. All right. Next, I have Erin. And let's see. I might have to search through some names. We have over 100 people on with us currently. Oh, I think I have Erin. Erin, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you give me your address for the record?
Yes, 161642 North Second, Seward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I will just say I am 100% for a mask mandate. Several reasons. My background is I am a registered nurse in a major medical facility in Lincoln. We moved out to Seward a couple of years ago. My husband is from here. He wanted to come back out to Seward to raise our family. He is a small-town kid. I am a small-town girl. But I have kept my job in Lincoln now. I am a decade in. My background is neurology, medical, surgical, forensics, most extensive in critical care and oncology. So I have seen the sickest of the sick for lots of different reasons. And I will be very honest. Those people that are not affected by COVID are not getting the help they need because hospitals are full. And they are not having good outcomes. And it's scary and it's really sad to watch those families. Some of them have underlying conditions, some of them don't. Some of them walk around just like you and I. And it's been really hard. Personally, we have three young children under the age of six. The infant is a medical-needs baby. He is dependent on oxygen and monitors to function throughout his day. Personally, we have taken all the proper precautions that we need to, everything that we have been, you know, that's been asked of us. But in order to function as a community and just to be a good human being to each other, I think a mask mandate needs to happen to see this virus through. Eventually, we'll be on the other side of it. It's not going to be for a while, I don't think, because there's too much about this virus that we don't know, that we're learning every single week. But I don't think that wearing a mask is hard to do, to take care of your neighbor, to take care of your community. I think the businesses around Seward that do require masks have done a nice job of offering curbside delivery, pickup, et cetera. You know, use your village. We have to have other people help us out with kids. Our oldest is in grade school up here at the elementary, and we both work in Lincoln. So we need help. But we keep our village small, and we've been okay this year. The nursing side of me says it's an absolute necessity. I have seen very poor outcomes because people have made very poor decisions. And they've been healthy. I don't know. I could go on the medical side and on the personal side, but I just, I feel very strongly that in order to care about your neighbor, to care about your community, to see this thing through to the end, it's absolutely needed. I 100% stand beside Four Corners, the hospital here in town, the physicians that I work with in Lincoln, everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next, I have Terry Hobson. I'm looking for Terry's iPhone. We'll see if this works. Terry, are you with us?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm Terry Hobson. I reside at 1356 Sparlane Avenue here in Seward. I have spoke before at one of your meetings regarding the mask mandate. I am a small-business owner. I own TNT Country Crafts and Boutique here in Seward. That is at 635 Seward Street. My husband also has his own business called Hopinato Entire. He has resided at 705 Main Street. I think he would speak. He's actually right now paying our little boy to bed. So I can't wrap my head around all of this. It's hard for me because viruses are viruses. I understand COVID. I get it. However, I have a hard time to wrap my head around COVID versus influenza. We never masked for influenza, and you know, COVID comes because of the pandemic. And all of a sudden, you know, we're masking. And I respect rights of everyone. As owning a small business, I don't feel that it's my right to make my customers who walk through my door wear a mask. We had a customer in today who I had spoken with a little bit. I was, you know, hanging up some clothes. And she literally turned to me and said, "I am really glad that, you know, when I come in here, I don't have to wear a mask, you know, thank you." And I said, "You know, you're welcome. I feel it's your choice." And, you know, I agree, like, I know Jennifer Robbins had said something, you know. We all are Nebraskans, common sense. Wash your hands. Maybe don't go on party buses. Maybe don't go into big groups of things. You know, common sense that way. I mean, we all did it probably at Thanksgiving. We stayed home as a family. We just had my mother. My mom is 76 years old. She still gets around and goes. And I guess my theory is, is it's been a tough year. A tough year for a small-business owner. And if a mask works, a person who comes into our store, as long as you're keeping a six-foot distance, then what's the worry on the other end if I would not have a mask on, if a mask is properly working? However, I go on to asthmatic, as being an asthmatic person myself, I have asthma background. When I have wore a mask in my store, I literally have had to take my mask off and go use my inhaler. I've had to use my inhaler more often since I have masked. Let's talk about the side effects, too, that we don't hear, which is, have you ever been concerned about people who, maybe with having small businesses, and you're already struggling? And if you're going to put up this mandate, whose responsibility is if someone walks into our store? If that person's not going to mask, am I going to have to force them to mask? If they don't mask, am I going to have to take a next protocol to call the police to have them? I guess I'm concerned on those ends. We've heard there's going to be a fine. A small-business owner who is already struggling, you're going to slap a fine on them. I do have some issues and concerns about that. I guess, I feel it should be our choice, our choice. And if you don't want to shop in-store, there's online. And this is probably going to sound not so nice, but shame on our Seward community. We need you now. All small-business owners need our Seward community support. If you don't want to step inside our store, we offer curbside pickup. We offer delivery, free into town. We have a website you can order from. You can have it shipped for free to your home. So when you say you're going to pick up and take your business to Lincoln where you're at higher risk, entering into Lincoln, I don't care if you're masked or not. You're still going to be in a bigger city where there's more cases or more exposure, even if you have a mask. I don't know. There's so much. You hear positive sides, you hear negative sides, you're, you know. And I respect everyone's decision, as wish I wish everyone to respect my decision as a business owner. This hasn't been easy. And we also need to think about depression, suicides, everything. It's been tough. And so, all I can say is, please, Seward, everyone really think about this. You know, I mean, I appreciate all of our healthcare workers. I have one of my nieces who is a hospice. I appreciate everyone. I respect everyone's decisions. But I feel like sometimes the people who maybe are on our side, I could agree with Elliot, I could agree with Zach, I can agree with, you know, the choice of, you know, where is it to come to where it's our choice? And our customers' choice. And when I told the customer today that there's going to be a meeting regarding this, her face was just blank, looking at me, like, you're kidding, right? And I says, "No, I'm not." I, you know, we have about, I would say, 60% of customers that come in that don't mask and maybe 40% that do mask. And the ones that do mask, they don't judge us when they're in. They're sweet, they're nice, they're kind. They purchase something. So I guess I'm going to lay this. So I guess I'm going to lay this out there. Um, let's really think about it. Um, give it to consideration for small business owners and let's support one another through this pandemic and make some smart decisions, smart choices. And if you're not comfortable going in, remember, most of us businesses have websites. We have Facebooks. You can message us. We can meet you outside, we can ship to you. So, on that note, thank you for your time. Um, I appreciate it. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Kind of cut her off there on her thank you, but thank you again. Uh, next we have Peyton Davis Schmidt. Peyton, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um, I'm Peyton Davis Schmidt. I live at thirteen twenty Augusta Drive. I'm gonna keep this short and sweet because I'm sure we all have other things that we need to be doing right now. Um, I think we've been given an ample amount of time to do the right thing, to protect ourselves and protect others. I had emailed one of my representatives on July nineteenth, asking that a mandate be considered. And obviously, we still don't have one, otherwise we all wouldn't be here right now. Um, we as a community are showing that we cannot be responsible to make the right decision to protect ourselves and others. Um, so I think that we need to be focusing on prevention, or at least focusing on slowing the spread of COVID. Um, we need to be listening to our health experts and following their recommendations. So I urge the council members to please vote for this mandate and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton. Uh, next I have Brandy and I'm going to see if I can find Brandy on here. Oh, I have a Brandy. We're, we're going to try it. Brandy Reima, are you with us?
Hello?
Brandy?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Awesome. Okay, my name is Brandy Reima and I'm at six forty-four Seward Street. And I am the owner of Brandy's Balloons. And um, I want to say that a smile is the shortest distance between two people. And one thing that has happened through all of this is that simple ability for connection with each other and compassion and love and joy is masked. And it is really hard. And um, you know, we hear about all of these, these positive cases and the rise of positive cases. I would like to know how many of these positive cases were people who had masks on versus how many who were not? Um, because we keep hearing, "We have to mask, you know, do it for each other." And the cases keep rising, but the prevalence of masks is more all the time. Every, every day, every passing week, every passing month, there are more and more masks. And there are more and more and more and more cases. So do they work? Um, I, I, I'm, I'm just struggling with them because I think smiling is important. I think that's an important way to stay connected with each other. If we can keep that, that six-feet distance, then, then why do we have to mask? And if it, if, if you feel most comfortable with the masks on, with a mask on, I totally support you in your decision. Go ahead and wear your mask and I will be sure that I maintain my six-feet distance. And I, I think that should be sufficient. I mean, Lincoln has had a mask mandate longer than, than we have. I think Lincoln does have the strictest mask mandate. And what are their numbers? Are they going down, you know? And so many, I don't know. That's, that's just where I'm at. So it has been such a really difficult year for everyone in every sense of life. I think all of our fuses are so short and things that maybe wouldn't irritate any of us on any given day. You never know when somebody's going to snap because, well, gosh, COVID. And we try to laugh about it and we're coming up to the holiday season. So I feel like being able to share and connect that smile with a smile is still so important. When you walk into a store, let's just say Walmart, because I think it's safe to say every single person who lives in Seward has been to Seward Walmart. I, I think that's a very fair statement. So when you walk around Walmart in Seward, this is our community, still town, we know each other. You're walking around Seward in Walmart with a mask on, people don't even make eye contact. You cannot catch COVID by hello and being polite. We are still a community. So if we can maintain that six-feet distance, please let us keep the ability to make the choice to spread smiles through the holiday season. That's, that's all that I have and I appreciate everyone's time. I know this has been a long night and I just, thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Mayor, at this time, I have no one else in the queue currently. Now, if anybody's on the chat or the app and they want to send me a, uh, something on the chat to City of Seward and have your opportunity to speak, if we see no one else, I believe our protocol is we're going to unmute everybody and see if we can catch the ones that I know are only operating on the phone. And I see a few of them. So if you still would like to speak and you're on the app on your computer or something else or a device that you can do so, uh, I have one. And we'll go ahead and Scott, I'm going to unmute you because you're the first one up and we'll see if anyone else rolls in. Scott, are you available?
I am.
Oh, you're, you're a little bit echoey, so.
Okay, I think I'll have that fixed here momentarily. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, thank you and uh, for the opportunity to speak, uh, especially to the council and to the mayor and to fellow citizens of Seward, so thank you. I am a COVID, I'm a recovered COVID nineteen uh, patient, I guess. Uh, and I want to state clearly to the, to the group that I, I really do respect all the businesses that are trying to protect themselves and also protect their business. I respect the, the difficult circumstances of our healthcare workers. Uh, I know it's very trying and I acknowledge that uh, that masks may help mitigate the spread, albeit not to the, the degree implied maybe tonight. But having said all that, I would like to voice my opposition to the ordinance for three main reasons. The first one is that if I understand it correctly, the ordinance shifts the burden of enforcement to the local business owners who are already um, burdened to the point of breaking by the virus. And uh, they're not really equipped to be the enforcers of this. And so uh, defining them as a, as I think I read in the ordinance, as a public nuisance and threatening them with fines or potentially even jail if they don't comply, uh, seems like the wrong answer to the problem, to me. Uh, the second reason I would oppose the ordinance is that it's complicated. Uh, it applies the ordinance in a way that, that is not uniform. So there are exemptions for certain groups of people or for certain businesses or county offices. And it just points to the difficulty of trying to legislate this fairly over a large population. And so that also is another problem with the, the ordinance, in my view. And then the final thing is, is merely the personal liberty thing. So um, that's been spoken to. I, encouragement is great. Encouragement and education to do the right thing is even better. Uh, edicts are not great, in my view. And so I think they have the potential to generate animosity and arguments and ineffectiveness that none of us want. I really, really want to help. Uh, Dr. Kettner asked for help. He says, "I'm begging for help. The nurses are begging for help. I want to help. I want to be asked to help and I want to respond to that. Uh, and I will in every possible way that I can personally. And I know a lot of citizens of Seward would also be eager to do that. They just don't want to be ordered." And so that would be the third, the third reason. So thank you for the opportunity to voice that. Uh, I respect all the people on the call on both sides of this issue. But I think as we narrow in on the ordinance itself, I think there are some inherent flaws that make it really difficult. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Um, Mayor, again, uh, I'll unmute you. I don't have any other specific speakers that haven't spoken already on the chat. And so if you want, I'll go ahead and unmute anyone that is still participating by phone or otherwise.
Okay.
All right, we're going to attempt this. Please, everybody, don't start yelling at each other if uh, that's what happens. So uh, bear with me for one second here. All right. So we got a bunch of stuff in the background. Is there anybody else? You should be able to unmute yourselves. I hear a few people. Is there anybody else that would like to speak that has not? And you can also hit me in the chat, City of Seward. Dana, I see you and I'll grab you in here in just a second. Is there anyone else? If you're on the phone, I believe you have to hit star six is usually the dial tone or the number to unmute yourself on the phone. I'm going to go back and mute everyone unless there's someone that feels strongly. Please, again, continue to hit me up in the chat, City of Seward. And I'm going to go ahead and mute everyone again and then I'm going to recognize Dana.
Come on, Dana, let him have it.
All right. Bear with me a second there. I'm going to find in my hundreds of people that are on. All right, Dana, I found you there. Dana, are you with us?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks for letting me speak. I spoke at the last meeting, so I'm going to save um, some of my comments because a lot of you have already heard them. I think tonight I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and then express a couple of concerns. Um, it's no secret that I'm against a mask ordinance uh, for many, many reasons. But one of the questions I have is what else is Seward doing? What is Four Corners doing? What is Memorial Healthcare System doing to help the at-risk members of our community? Because quite frankly, all we have heard about since the beginning of this pandemic is hand washing, social distancing and mask-wearing. That's all we ever hear about. And there's been so much data and so much research that's come through now throughout these past several months about things that we know about who's at risk. You know, the obese, the elderly, the immune, immunocompromised, the diabetics, the people with heart disease. It's looking pretty clearly like if you suffer with inflammation of any kind, COVID causes inflammation. COVID is nasty and it creates a lot of inflammation in, in some people very quickly. And so if you have existing inflammation in your system, you're probably not going to do so hot with COVID. Um, some other data that's come out and is pretty, pretty well researched is on vitamin D levels. It's pretty clear that people with really low vitamin D levels are not doing well with COVID. And so my question to our healthcare providers in this community, I mean, we can fight about masks all day long. And quite frankly, I'm exhausted. I'm stressed, I'm, I have anxiety about it, I'm frustrated. It makes me a little sad that it always has to come down to politics. Like, why do all the anti-maskers have to be Republican? And why do all the pro-maskers have to be liberals? Like, why? I, I, I don't get that. Like, I didn't even become interested in politics until COVID. But it just seems to me like so, it's so unbalanced. It's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a political thing now. I wish it wasn't, but it is. And so I, I say, "Let's forget the politics and let's look at the health of our community." And instead of, I mean, quite frankly, I just traveled to Texas and back. And what I've noticed about people who mask is they don't respect social distance. People who, who are working with other coworkers in masks do not respect social distance. People who are interacting with people in masks or out of masks, if you're wearing a mask, I find that people invade my space. And whether it's at Costco or whether it's at a restaurant or whether it's in line waiting to be served somewhere, people are overconfident when they have a mask on. And the other thing that concerns me is the disgusting condition of people's masks and the way people handle masks and use masks. And I think that in the end, when the data comes forth, we're going to find out that these things weren't so great after all. But in, you know, out of respect for the pleas of our healthcare providers, you know, I think we do have to have the conversation, but I, I have to ask, like, why aren't we testing vitamin D levels? Why aren't we running a campaign in our community where uh, vitamin D level testing is free? Do I, to identify people with low levels? And let's get these people supplementing and let's help them have a better chance. What can we do with our elderly and immunocompromised? What can we do for our elderly in the nursing homes to provide additional protections? Because if you all think the mask alone is going to save you from this virus, it's, it's just not. And we're seeing that all across the country. I've seen, you know, everybody wants to point to the science that, that supports their point. And the truth of the matter is there's science on both sides. And I've seen graph after graph after graph that shows that the mask-wearing is really not, the, the curves look very similar. All the curves look similar. So I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm just, those are my thoughts. You all know I'm against it. The, the, what's happening to our local businesses is breaking my heart. I'm so anxious and upset. I, I just don't even really like to leave my house anymore. I try to stay, stay home most of the time unless I absolutely have to go out. But I, I just really ask the council to really think this through. And it's, it, I just don't think it's all about masks. I think there's a lot more to this. I think there's a lot of other things we could be doing. And we're, we're like an island out here, guys. Seward's like a, its own little case study. We could do something different. We, we could do something that's unlike any other city in our state and say, and take the lead on something. Say, "Hey, what if we, what if we just identify every single person in our community and find out if your vitamin D level is not in optimal range, we're going to help you supplement. We're going to help get it in because it looks like you're not going to do well against COVID. Let's, let's look at antiviral support. Let's look at prevention. Let's look at like nutrition." But I don't hear that coming out of the Health Department and I don't hear that coming out of Memorial Healthcare. All I hear is wash your hands, stay six feet apart, wear a mask. And I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Um, again, I have no one else left in the queue at this point, Mayor, and so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Um, I just want a couple of quick things before we wrap up the, the comment, public comment on this. Um, I know we have Dr. Kettner and Roger. Would either one of you be able to kind of address that quickly as far as what all? Because I honestly don't know either what, what all you've been doing with this approach. And then once that's concluded, I, I'll have Josh Field Superintendent, I think he has a letter that he wants to read as well. And then that will conclude the, the public comment on this item. Dr. Kettner or, or Roger, either one? I believe.
Josh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there, is there a specific question you want me to answer?
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I've heard that the issue raised before about what other approach is as far as vitamin D. I assume that's also important. I don't know, could you just touch on that real briefly as far as that issue?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a little bit tangential to the mask question, but in, in the interest of public health, yes. I think vitamin D is.
Well, who's Dr. Kettner?
Oh, is that who it is? I don't have my glasses on.
Is important vis-à-vis. Is important vis a vis COVID-19, and there's some emerging evidence. In fact, when we, you know, diagnose people with COVID-19, supplementing vitamin D is one of the things that we talk about. You know, there's, there's other things that we, we talk about and, you know, we can go down a rabbit hole on how we deal with susceptibility or treatment of this, but, you know, I think, I think kind of focus up. I mean, how can we keep people from getting infected? Because that would be my, my primary thing. And, you know, what we're talking about is a mask mandate. And if you don't get exposed to droplets that have COVID-19 in them, it doesn't matter what your vitamin D level is, you don't get COVID. So, you know, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts here, and we're learning as we go. There. Yeah, vitamin D is important. Not getting COVID is important. We're, we're just, we're the tipping point.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kettner. Can you unmute Laura real quick and then we'll go to Josh Fields?
Thank you. I just wanted to address that as well. There's, there's so many different approaches that we're taking right now to fight COVID. And, you know, there are, there are approaches such as quarantine and isolation that are some of our, our most significant tools that we use. And, and that asking people and, and having people stay home when they've been exposed or been or tested positive is, is a huge, that's a huge factor in whether, in how we can control spread. Unfortunately, we're not, people aren't necessarily doing that like they're supposed to, and we're having trouble having people stay home when they're sick. People may not know that they're sick and they're out in the community spreading this. The way that we fight this, it's really like, and this is something that we've talked about, UNMC always uses this example that it's like a block of Swiss cheese cut into a lot of slices. And you layer all these pieces of Swiss cheese and it's, it ends up being a block of cheese. But every strategy that we use is like a piece of Swiss cheese, and you line them all up and you have a block of cheese. But, but one of these, you know, every, one slice of cheese is quarantine, one slice of cheese is wear a mask, one slice of cheese is use your social distancing, one slice of cheese is get enough rest, one slice of cheese is have a healthy diet. All these slices of cheese lined up form a, are, are the strategy together. So, you know, there are many things that are going on and we do have programs ongoing all the time to help people try to maintain a healthy weight and different things as well. So there's, there's many things in place right now, but right now we need that slice of cheese that has the mask to help us as one of the strategies that we have to layer them all together. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Last, we'll go to Josh Fields, Superintendent of Schools, and then we will go back to the council for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I know it's been a lot of great discussion tonight, but just wanted to give a school perspective here a little bit and just a, a lot of that, that I wrote for love or support, which was supported from our Board of Education. But when you think about where we're at right now with Seward County at 232 the last 14-day count and other states across Nebraska approving face covering ordinance, from a Seward, from a Seward Public School standpoint, we just have seen, since we required face covering since the first day of school, that our protocols, along with other protocols such as cleaning, increased ventilation, temperature checks, and keeping students home when they have symptoms, has allowed us to continue in-person teaching and learning. At the district level, we have seen little spread within the classroom setting. We've seen all of our quarantines outside of school, and that's natural as you have a, a parent or someone else that maybe gets it or from settings outside as such as Halloween parties or whatnot. Our students and staff have been the model really in how face covering can be part of the protocols, protect everyone. We just feel like anything we can do to help in the community to make sure that we can keep our students for in-person learning really has supported Seward Public Schools. So thank you for consideration of approving a face covering ordinance.
Thank you, Josh. Greg, at this time, we'll go back to the council for discussion. And also, is, is there anything in the ordinance that we, that needs to be amended from the original? Do you need to mention anything?
Yeah, and I'll unmute Kelly here. Kelly, make sure you can. Oh, we're playing the game. There you go.
Yeah, I just had a couple of text edits. There's been a few updates since the last version that was submitted. The gatherings provisions, those were eliminated. That was a typo. That was from our previous directed health measure that we had, we had adopted. And then 52-1-5 just has a typo in it. The word workings should be replaced with the word workers. That's all I have.
Good. Thank you, Kelly. Does the council have any comments or questions at this time?
We're gonna, I'm going to go through and just unmute as many council people as I can. If you got noise or something going on in the background, feel free to mute yourself again, council members. And I'll work my way through. You're kind of all spread out now.
Should we just jump right in?
Yes, go ahead.
This is a question for JB. One of our testifiers tonight mentioned the, the challenges of if you have a medical condition where you aren't able to wear a mask. I assume that you, you've probably had that come through the office. He just shares a little bit of perspective on that for us.
Yeah. We get requests, not infrequently, to, to talk about mask exemptions and they're kind of few and far between. I know this, this kind of unfortunately gets political, but there are some folks that, that for medical reasons can't wear a mask, and that is kind of the minority of folks that can't wear a mask, and I, I respect that. And we try to work with folks on that, and I have written a few medical exemptions for patients to not wear a mask and have an exemption for that. A lot of the other issues, like I'm rebreathing my own carbon dioxide, or I'm going to get pneumonia from this, or things that's just plain not true. But there are a few people for medical reasons that cannot wear facial covering.
Thanks. Thanks for that perspective. I appreciate you sharing that.
I got a question for Kelly. Kelly, I know that we have an ordinance before us tonight, but I had sent you an email about if you were aware of any other legal means or procedural things that other cities or mayors are doing short of an ordinance, you know, that, that makes it a a crime, basically, you know, like, I know that David City Mayor did an executive order, I heard, like, on the 20th of November, that was less, less of a legal law, but more of a very strong directive. Do you have anything to offer on that?
So, most recently, Gretna, Ralston, Norfolk, Hastings, they've all done ordinances, and I think the reason ordinances have been adopted is because they have an enforcement mechanism attached to them. Without that, I think you just have nothing more than a proclamation or a declaration by the mayor or by your council. You can do that. You can make a proclamation or a declaration, but at the end of the day, you won't have any enforcement. So I think that's, again, that's why most of the other municipalities are, are doing mask mandates via a, an actual ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah. When Nancy came and gave her presentation, did I unmute myself? I did. Gave her present, gave her presentation, you know, at that point in time, I had spoken up and I did not think an ordinance was needed. And I, and I, I based that off of where we were at as a community at that time. You know, we, the dial was middle to low yellow. And, and so at that point in time, I thought we, we were where we need to be. We were, we were doing okay. I believe that following Wednesday was followed up by the letter in the newspaper that was front page from the mayor and the schools and, and others asking people to do these things. And quite frankly, since then, and this is, this is my observation, Walmart being the place we all visit, the line doesn't exist anymore to get in. I mean, and it's Walmart. They can do what they want. It's, it's their business. People, some wear masks, some don't wear masks. Numbers have been going up. We've been in red for three weeks now, and my, my comment back then was, I don't think this is the time for it, but it doesn't mean that I wouldn't say there would be a time for it. And I'm looking beyond myself, but looking to my neighbors, my friends, my fellow citizens, impacts on first responders, the hospital staff, friends, family, you know, and what is it, what does it mean to us if, if our health providers can't provide the health to us that we need? What does that mean for the rest of us? And so the month or six weeks of an inconvenience of a mask mandate is not an inconvenience at all to me. It, it's what I would want to do to slow the spread. And what I view as help keep our community healthy. So obviously with that comment, I, I support the ordinance. I'm sure others may want to comment, but I'm going to introduce the ordinance.
Okay. You can still have discussion, but let me start this process at this time. And just so everyone understands what that process is, once, now that the council member has introduced the ordinance, there will first be a vote on whether to suspend the statutory requirement that there would be three readings of the ordinance before a vote could take place. The council often votes to do this, so that is, that, so that a vote on the ordinance can take place at the same meeting rather than waiting two more meetings to take the vote. This vote does require six yes votes of the eight members to pass. If this vote fails, then nothing more would happen tonight until the next meeting where the ordinance is read a second time, and then the final reading will take place at, at a third meeting. If there are six yes votes tonight to suspend that statutory requirement, then we would proceed to a vote on the ordinance itself, which would require five votes to pass. So I just want to make sure those who may not be as familiar with the process, that's what we're looking at this evening. So now I'm going to read the ordinance by title. An ordinance to add Article Two, Sections 52.1.1 through 52.1.11, entitled Prevention of the Novel Coronavirus COVID-19 to Chapter 51 of the Seward Municipal Code to provide legislative findings and intent to require individuals to wear facial coverings and exceptions thereof to provide for the enforcement of violations and penalties to establish a sunset provision to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. So the ordinance has been read by title and is designated as Ordinance Number 2020-33, and the title is hereby approved. So I'll need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
I'd like to ask some questions before we get down to this room.
Carl?
And this would be for Greg and Laura, possibly. I'm a data analyst. That's what I am. It's kind of hard to base decisions off of allocated state cases when we're talking about hospitalization rates. There's been a lot of numbers thrown out. I know in, in my profession, my opinion, I don't have enough information on this. I don't. Like, we have 73 total hospitalizations. What's the duration of a hospitalization average? Do we know that information?
I'll unmute Laura, and then I also have, I see Dr. Kettner's also got his hand up, so I'll get them both and we'll see who, who can answer that for you.
I would rather probably have Dr. Kettner answer that one.
I can tell you from my personal experience, it, it, like everything else with COVID, it varies broadly. We have very brief admissions that last a day or two, and we have what we call the long haulers who are in the hospital two, three weeks, and then they come to skilled care and stay with us for two or three weeks. And so it's highly variable. I, I think one other thing, if I could kind of tag on to the, the fact that hospitalizations have plateaued, despite the fact that cases are going up, I can tell you firsthand that that's happening because we are taking care of sicker people at home. Once we run up against that ceiling of, of where we know we're going to overrun the hospital system, we start sending people home earlier. And I mean, we all of, all of the medical professionals send people home earlier. We manage sicker people at home. We don't admit people that we would have admitted two months ago because we know, you know, we're going to overwhelm the system and then things don't go well. It's what you saw in New York City. When you have one nurse taking care of 10 or 12 patients, you just don't do the basic blocking and tackling of medical care, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So, yeah, the, the fact that the numbers are stalling out in terms of hospitalizations is, it's good, but it comes with an asterisk, you know? If, if I can tag off that question, when, when you're doctoring at home or treating home versus in the hospital, what, 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 what's the recovery period like versus having a doctor and a nurse? Do, do you know that? Dr. Kettner? This is kind of what we're doing every day now. I, I can just tell you, folks that we would have admitted a month ago, some of those we're managing at home, and we're talking to them multiple times a day. We're asking them to do things that you wouldn't normally do at home. I want you to check your oxygen saturation. I want you to do this. I want you to do that. And we're checking in with them and then have hard endpoints where you say, if you hit this point, I need to see you in the emergency room. We're going to admit you. Where two months ago, when we had more capacity, we were like, yeah, I'm just kind of worried about you. I'm going to admit you now just because things might go bad. Now, that's what happens when you run up against capacity. So, but to answer your original question, it's, it's highly variable. That's the whole problem with this disease is you can have anything from somebody that's totally asymptomatic and spreading disease to folks that get sick, and seven days later, you know, they're on a ventilator.
Right. So do we have any idea what this mask mandate will reduce those numbers?
I think Laura, you know, alluded to studies that have been done. It helps. It's not a fantasy. It is the Swiss cheese analogy. You have multiple layers. This is just one thing that, that helps. And we're at a point where we need everything we can do. You know, we have new therapeutics. We have, you know, a vaccine very close. I mean, there's a distinct possibility that frontline healthcare workers and nursing home residents will get a vaccine yet this month. And, and that is nothing short of miraculous, but getting to the point where everybody has a vaccine available, that's a ways off. I, I never thought that we were going to keep COVID out of our community. I just hope that we could keep it at bay. You know, just keep a lid on this thing until we could get a vaccine, and that, that's always been our goal.
And I would just, one, one of the pieces I had had in my letter was that study in Kansas where basically they compared counties. Some of the counties had mask mandates, some did not. And the ones that had the mask mandates, they had, or the ones that did not have the mask policies had about twice the number, nearly twice as many average new daily cases when it came down to it. So it's, it's something that, you know, if we could even get 20 or 30%, you know, that's going to really help the hospitals.
So when we're talking about, is there a difference between ER admittance and hospitalization in your numbers? I, I think that to me is a little bit confusing. I just wanted to ask that as well.
Yeah, I think Roger could. Yeah, I think Roger could speak to that maybe a little bit better than I can, but I, I can tell you, you know, when, when we talk about people in our system that are, we break it down by emergency room, you know, versus people that we're testing versus people that are inpatients. But then, you know, you got to kind of back the data out and look at from all the people from Seward County, how many are ending up in an emergency room and how many are hospitalized. Um, when you look at the four corners data, when it's hospitalized patients, those are inpatients. Those are people that are in a bed. They have a doctor. A lot of times they're in an ICU. You know, more often than not, those are ICU patients because we're seeing sicker patients now. Um, and again, what, what we're running up against is that we have really sick patients that we need to get to a higher level of care, and that's becoming harder and harder.
And that's, that's based on capacity issues, correct?
Yeah, capacity, and I, I, like I said before, some of that capacity is not physical capacity, it's staffing issues. Um, you know, like I said before, if you have a room, but you don't have staff, you have a hotel. And nobody wants to go to a hotel to, to get treated for COVID. You need nursing staff and respiratory therapists. And, you know, honestly, the physician side of it is pretty easy. Um, a physician can manage multiple patients. Um, what you need is hands-on nursing and respiratory therapy, and unfortunately, those folks are also getting sick or getting exposures and having to quarantine, so it's limiting our capacity.
Nancy, we're just taking comments and questions from the council at this time. Carl, do you have anything else?
Um, yeah, the, the one that I, I, the main one I wanted to get out was, we've had contact tracing since the beginning. Um, where are we on that? What's led to this spike? Based on anything, and this is what I've been able to do in my off hours today, is just that, you know, do we have a top five, maybe top ten list of sources that this is spiking from? Um, looking at a seven-day, ten-day average, these cases spiked the first week in November. Ever since then, it's been a downward trend. Uh, like I said, I'm not dismissing what the cases are in the hospital. If they're still sitting there, they're still sitting there. That doesn't, that doesn't change. Um, I understand that. Um, and we can manipulate this data all we want, but with we have that contact tracing, where are we seeing the source of these come from? Like, what, what did we see in that last week of October to the first week in November that led to that jump?
Well, there was Halloween. Um, I think we had a lot of gatherings around Halloween. We started having uh people, uh, you know, are, were starting to move indoors a little bit more as well. Um, you know, as, as time has gone on, everyone is, including me. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to be happier when this is over than I am. Um, we, we're all getting tired of doing all these things that we know we need to do. And people have started to be less careful. The directed health measures really opened up at the end of, or in Oc, you know, in September and October. And um, we had, people were not following any types of, you know, we didn't have any safety guidelines in place for gatherings or anything um that were required. And people were just going back to living their lives the normal way. What you see then is that your cases go up, and you have, two weeks later, you start to see the hospitalizations go up, and deaths follow that. So there's lag times with hospitalizations and deaths. We went from two hundred cases a week to four hundred cases a week, where we're at now, basically. And we're going to, we pay for that in the future, two, three, four weeks in the future. And what we've seen is a lot of people gathering in um small groups. We've seen, and, and I hate to even say this, but a lot, we've seen a lot of spread from, from things that are happening at churches. And, you know, they're perfectly wholesome and things that we all want to do, but they're, people just are, you know, spreading it that way. This is so contagious. And it's like, oh, yeah.
And if you wouldn't mind me peaking on that for, for just a second, um, you know, initially, what we saw, like in April, May, through the summer, we could trace where these cases were coming from. You, we had events, and we could say, oh, you did this thing, and you were at this place, and you got it. The vast majority of the patients I deal with now that are COVID positive, we have no idea where they got it. Um, you can't do contact tracing when you have this level of spread. It's the person next to you at church. It's the person behind you at the grocery store. You know, you can't do contact tracing when you have this amount of numbers. No, it would take an army of people to be able to do this, and Four Corners is doing the best they can, and, and we're trying to augment that. But at this level of spread, it's everywhere, and, and that's the whole point. Um, it, it's really difficult to contact trace at this point.
Agreed.
Uh, I, I think one of the things, and this is just me being me, if this were to pass tonight, the impact is most likely in Seward. That, I mean, that's where it's enforced, right? Seward doesn't have a seven-day average of four hundred cases. Seward County has a seven-day average of a hundred and three. So when we're talking about, I think part of the confusion and comes from when we're talking about, and, and, and this is understandable, this is not an attack on anything, is that, Laura, your circle is the Four Corners. Our circle is Seward, and that's, those are the numbers that I want to build off of. I can extrapolate on the other ones, especially if you can see a trend, uh, any correlation between activities, all of those things. Um, but I, I, I'm afraid of the, not necessarily misleading, but misinterpretation of what some of those things can say, like when we talk about, um, the earlier we talked about three hundred and twenty a month statewide. The, what does that impact? Does that impact Seward? Not directly, but it does towards the governor's twenty-five percent red line, right? So all these things come into play, and it's a very intricate, multifaceted technically dance that they're doing.
Well, and, and can I suggest maybe that you think about Seward as a community that's part of a bigger system? In that the hospitals that we need to use, it's Memorial Healthcare Systems, but it's also Brian and St. Ease, UNMC, and those hospitals. Seward is, is you, is really, is a critical access hospital, Memorial Healthcare Systems, that takes care of patients, and they have agreements with Brian and to take the more seriously ill patients. So they work in tandem. So when statewide things are going south, it's going to affect Seward. So by, by protecting the residents of Seward, the city of Seward, and helping lower some of that transmission in the city, you're, you're also, um, you know, there's also many other cities that are trying to do this, but we worry that there just won't be, if you have a car accident, or if you have a heart attack, you won't have a bed available in Lincoln. Won't have a bed available if you do catch COVID and you get really sick in Lincoln. So we're trying to, you know, also really help and protect the citizens of Seward.
Yep, and, and I understand that. I have a relative that's a nurse in Brian, actually, herself. And I've gotten so much more information than I'd even cared to think about on this whole issue in just under twenty-four hours. It's been overwhelming. Um, I think that's all the, the questions that I have on, um, just on the available data. I appreciate what you have out there. Me being me, I'd always want more, but at the same time, I understand staffing restrictions. Um, Jared hit on it uh directly with the, the resourcing and how to do contract tracing, I guess. Like I said, I don't want to come off as disingenuous. I, I'm not as, or is not as appreciative of what everyone is doing. I understand this. It hits my family as much as it does everybody else at the same time. So I do appreciate everything and every input that you guys can give us uh to assist in our decisions on how to move forward, what impacts those decisions are going to be made. So I do appreciate all the time and effort that you guys have put into this, and will continue to do moving forward.
Question and a comment. Um, and I'm seeing this based on what I do for a living. It's just been nothing but COVID since March, really. Um, nationally, if we're spiking, we're not coming back to the bottom. We're spiking and leveling off at a higher rate than spiking and leveling off at a higher rate, never coming down. Are we seeing that here in Seward?
So we have really, yeah, I mean, Seward has, the numbers have grown and grown and grown. And um, we have had about one week, two weeks of leveling off a little bit. Um, but we're at this huge, very, very high level that is, um, you know, what we really need to see is going back down the mountain instead of staying at this high level. Where it, um, my, our fear is that um, with all the gap, you know, Thanksgiving has the potential, depending on, we're going to see here in the next couple of weeks, how many people did gather over Thanksgiving and how many people, you know, how much, how many new cases might have resulted from what went on over the Thanksgiving weekend. And I think we're all very anxiously awaiting to see what happens because what could happen is that we had a little plateau, and we could be going right back up, which is worst case scenario. If people were, took precautions and were very, very careful as, in a, in a widespread way, we might see it go back down. So time will tell um where we're at with that. I can tell you, there is a lot of population in Seward that has not yet had COVID. We've only, we had a call with UNMC yesterday where they think in Nebraska, looking at Nebraska and all the modeling they've done, that maybe twenty-five percent of our population has had COVID. That leaves a whole lot of people who have not had it.
Public health has always been the cornerstone of America, I think. Um, you don't have a strong economy without a good public health system. You don't have business expansion if you don't have a healthy population. Um, and, and I appreciate everything you do and everything that the healthcare workers at Memorial and spread out across the area have done. Um, they're magnificent, and they're our heroes in, in every way. And I have done a lot of webinars and a lot of uh workshops and conferences virtually, listening to and talking with CEOs from hospitals and healthcare systems from, from Seattle all the way to New York. And I can tell you that there, it, there, it's a grave situation. They're running out of people, and the people that they have employed are getting very sick and burnt out and, and, and suicide among healthcare workers was a problem before COVID, and it's just magnified now. So we need to appreciate every single healthcare worker. You know, when we're at our worst, they're at their best, and they're pulling us through. And um, we need to keep them uh safe, and we need to do what we can to help them so that they don't get it themselves and they don't take it home. I mean, that's got to be a big fear if you're a healthcare worker is bringing it home to your own people, to your own families. So I think that's very, really important. In, in an overall issue, I don't see this as being a rights issue. Really, it's not. It's a shared responsibility and a shared sacrifice issue. And that's something that has been a cornerstone of our, of our country since the very beginning. We have often been called upon to uh share in the responsibility of, of making decisions that affect the public health, and we are called upon to make some small sacrifices. And I think it's one of those times, and let's view it that way. Let's pull together, and, and whether or not the mask mandate can be fully enforced or not, let's use it as our anchor to say, this is what we have. Let's move together as one toward a, a better goal, toward, toward getting this curve down permanently. So that when we get the vaccine and it's implemented, which is going to be months yet before we all get it, that, you know, we put this behind us in a real way because we're going to get another one. There's going to be another something down the road. We, we know that. So I, I'm really hoping that we can pass this ordinance. It is temporary. It is something we can all do. And as a final thought, I guess I remember back to talking with my mom about World War Two when she worked at Alice Chalmers in Milwaukee in the factory, and, and my dad got drafted. And I'm sure he didn't want to get drafted and go to war, and I'm sure my mom wasn't keen about working long hours at a, in a manufacturing plant. But they accepted the rationing, and they accepted the sacrifice, not because they wanted to do it or because they liked it because they felt that that was what they could contribute. That was their part. They were in it to win it. We were all Americans. We were all pushing together for the same goal. Where is that spirit right now? We need it right now more than ever. This has killed hundreds of thousands of people, and I think um, we looked up some statistics. It, it's actually killed almost as many, if not more, than all of the casualties in, in World War Two from the United States, the battle casualties. So, you know, let's, let's put the politics beside us, and, and, and let's look at this from a public health situation. And let's work together, wear a mask, gripe about it, have our pity party. You know, it's not great. We can stipulate that we're all going to be miserable, and we're going to do it because it's the right thing to do. We're going to save lives, and we're going to help people um avoid getting this. Thanks.
One other comment I'd like to make, because I want to reiterate what everybody has said about the work that uh, that Laura, you're doing, and, and Dr. JB, you're my doctor. Um, I, I can't imagine working in, under the, the pressure that you are, and as a, as a, so thank you. Um, as a policy baker, um, you know, uh, I see myself as, as being in that position where we have to care for the greater good. We also have to, you know, be sensitive to what policies we're passing. And I, I am totally in favor of doing something. Personally, I agree with Mr. Severs that this ordinance in its current form is very complicated. I think it's a bit extreme. I think we should do something. But uh, in reading it, you know, we, we just have this sprung upon us within the last twenty-four hours. Uh, I want to do something, and I think the city should do something. That's why I asked Kelly for an alternative. Uh, I personally think this, this ordinance as currently drafted is, is too, too, uh, too extreme. So I'm comfortable with doing something. I'm just not real comfortable with this one the way it is, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Oh, I lost my train of thought, but now I just got it back. So sorry, it's getting late. You know, I, I agree with Ellen. Um, one of the things from reading through who knows how many pages of emails today, you know, you, you see all sorts of opinions on this. Um, I think one of the things that needs to be made clear, um, the city can do this. Like, there is no doubt about it. It's just whether you want the city to force you to do this, or if you can see the need from our hospital systems, see the need from outside our systems as they are inter, interweaved with each other. They are connected. Um, you know, can, can we make that sacrifice of ourselves willingly so an ordinance doesn't need to be enforced unwillingly? Um, I have questions on what's the compliance rate going to be if we do this as an ordinance? What's that? What is, I don't, I don't know what the impact is. Nobody does. It's never been done before. Is it going to lead to increased compliance, decreased rate? I don't know. And I don't think anybody knows that. Ideally, I think everybody would like to see it go down, like to see the enforcement go up, or just the, the willing participation to go up without having to do an, an ordinance. I know, I, I agree with Sid on this. I haven't had this in my hand over twenty-four hours. I've read through it a couple of times today. I've got areas highlighted that I have questions about. In its current form, I don't feel sufficient that I'm going to vote on it tonight, so I'm, I'm going to vote against the statutory rule, and I want more time to look at this. But I want to emphasize to the people that this is possible. Whether you want to believe that the city can't do this, it's possible. And unless somebody wants to challenge that, there are court systems for that. If anybody, you know, has looked into this as much as I have or talked to as many lawyers as I have, whether they're friends or, you know, on a, on a business type level, you know, it's possible. This can be done. The question is for us as policymakers is how do we want to do it? Do we want to do it? And what do we want it to look like if we do do it? I would like more time to have input on what this looks like. So that's, that's what's leading me to my vote of not dispensing with the statutory rule to see if there are changes that we can have made in here. In the meantime, man, people got to realize it's a losing battle to say it can't be done. And you got, you got some choices to make personally on how this is going to go forward.
So we, we've heard from obviously Carl and Sid and I agree. I mean, we've had this ordinance for 24 hours. It is something that was put together by the league and recommended by the league, whatever kind of tweaks Kelly put in from its original look. I, I'm unsure of that. Carl, you mentioned you got things highlighted. Sid, you, you mentioned concerns. I, I guess as, as we're sitting here as a council now, what are those concerns? So that we, we all are aware, if we don't end up voting on this tonight, we're all aware of where your concerns lie in this ordinance and what you're looking to have changed. I guess from my standpoint, it goes back to Kelly's comments earlier about having something with teeth or something that doesn't have teeth. There's a lot of things in the city of Seward that there's an ordinance that exists that are violated daily. And they, they are there for the purpose of if they become a huge nuisance, that we have those teeth to address them. And, and something to fall back on to do enforcement with. You know, and the city of Seward is not out and about driving around looking for those things. It is strictly comes down to a report or complaint from a, a citizen regarding that. You know, I'll go back to my comments at our prior meeting on this. We, we need to be kind and respectful to each other in this whole process. I believe it was Christie talking about it. If, shame on you if you are somebody who is, I'll use the word hazing on Christie because she has a medical condition. I mean, but what kind of Nebraskans are we if we are doing that? You know, and I'm still looking at this and I guess I'll, I'll be quiet and let, let you guys. I've been scrolling through it on my computer over the three hours we've been talking about this. And I'm just curious what you guys have, where you see issues with the ordinance in the way it's written.
I might chime in here on the, on the enforcement issue. In my work, I end up doing a lot of conversations with other health departments in addition to Laura's group. And in my conversations with the different health departments today, I did talk, had the opportunity to talk to some people who have already had an ordinance in place. And I said, well, how, how has that worked with your enforcement in your, you know, in your smaller towns, in your communities? Several of them said they've just had a couple of phone calls over the time that that ordinance has been in place. And I believe it's been a couple of weeks for, for these areas. And, and you know, what they did with their police is they went out and they did a, an educational visit where they said, hey, you know, this ordinance is passed, you need to comply and here's, here's what that looks like. And the business owners were very like receptive to that and they haven't had any problems since. Now that's all anecdotal. I can't, you know, say exactly what that looks like for Seward. But I, I do believe that if there is an ordinance in place, it does increase the amount of people wearing masks. And, and, and does it prevent the spread of COVID entirely? I mean, I go back to the, the UNMC illustration. They talk about the Swiss cheese all the time. And I know people can beat a dead horse, but if you really are around the virus as much as, as much as I have been since March, I believe that that works. I believe that the more preventions or the more interventions you put in place, eventually are going to get to a place where you're, you're maybe not stopping all of the virus spread, but you are lowering that level. And I was with Chris in the conversation, you know, when we looked at this earlier. I was still where I thought we were at a place where people were going to keep hopefully doing the right thing and that the spread would not be as prevalent as it is now. But now I know we're at the point where you can't, you know, really talk to anybody who either hasn't had some kind of direct exposure to COVID or knows someone who's personally dealing with COVID at that, at this point. So, you know, I, I am in support. I don't take the decision lightly, but I do believe that it will raise the incidence on the amount of people wearing masks in our community. And eventually hopefully will be a contributing factor to lowering the spread of the virus as a community spread.
I think one thing else that can be said, time is of the essence. And if we continue to kick this can down the road and wait till it's tweaked, till it's perfect, it might, it, we're, it's not slowing down for us. And I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Mayor, I am going to chime in and just check. Councilman Singleton, I'm going to unmute you just to see, do you have any comments or anything? I, I can't, I have a video for you, so I don't know if you've been waving or waiting to say anything.
I've been listening to everybody the whole time. It's the biggest thing is, you know, our responders and that, you know, we're getting all these calls. And the biggest thing is, you know, we're putting a lot of family members at risk when we go on these calls. I, I think the masks, you know, are a big thing in reducing and trying to bring these numbers down. And also hopefully this will reduce some of our daily calls. You know, it, it's tough for the department to respond to calls because every day we're putting the people on the squad at risk. And, you know, we have had members on the department that have had the COVID already. And their morale, you know, has changed because of the risk and the hazards we're putting our responders at. It's not just at the fire department, it's at the hospitals as well. So I, I, I mean, I have a son two weeks ago that I had to assist him and because he's been sick and he came back negative. But he's a school teacher and, you know, and we're saying we're taking care of everybody, but the risks are still out there. And, you know, it's the contact, you know? If we, if we're not taking the precautions, you know, it's not going to kill the disease. And that's the whole thing. We got, we got to use, we got to use the right responses. And I, I'm a little Larry on how harsh, you know, the enforcement's going to be. I, I agree about the mandate, but policing it and then putting people with a $500 fine? I, I'm not real kosher to that. But I, I would not be against the mandate of the mask. But, you know, the enforcement, I, I think we're being a little harsh there. That's my personal point on that. But I said, it'd be nice to see the vaccine come out. And I don't know when that's going to happen. And I said, until we get to that level, I, I think we need to take the extra precautions. But I said, the ordinance to me is a little stringent. That's all I have right now.
If it doesn't have teeth, it's not going to work.
And if I could just add to that real quick, just so everyone knows, the penalties in this ordinance are the default penalties we have in our code for anything that doesn't have a otherwise specific penalty. So if you're going to run down Main Street naked, this is the penalty you get for that. You know, it's, it's the same that we use for everything. So just keep it in mind that it's, it's an up to type penalty. So Kelly, could you just talk real quick about, I mean, the, that's what we use for our default penalty. But Kelly, could you just talk on like what's the, the reality is for, for something like this? Could you unmute Kelly real quick? Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's accurate. What we did was the penalty provision that we put in just mirrors the other penalty provisions that are in our code book right now. And all practicality, what's going to happen is it, when we issue a citation and we go to prosecute that citation, the judge will have discretion, just like any other nuisance violation. And we'll have a lot of discretion in the amount of the fine. So I, I would not expect that unless the violation was very egregious, that $500 would be the, the fine for a first time offense. But that would be up to the judge's discretion.
Thank you, Kelly.
Would it be practical or Kelly, or not to put like a $250 limit on it? Can we do that? And if we could, is that still having teeth in it?
Absolutely, that's possible. And, and some other municipalities have put smaller numbers in it as well. Again, unless the offense was, was really egregious, I don't even see a judge very often mandating a fine of $250. You know, it, it's probably going to be something a hundred dollars or less. I don't know. These are all new ordinances, but one of the other ordinances that have passed had penalty provisions of, I think, $25 or $50 in it. So really up to you. At the end of the day, we just wanted to have our penalty provisions to be consistent throughout, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor, I got one that I just, it came through on the chat. I had somebody ask about it earlier today, so we'll just explain it. What me and Kelly's thought process behind it was the expiration date. It's really up to whatever the council wants. The day we picked in there, I believe, was the January 20th. And that fell the day after your second meeting in January, so that you could revisit this before it expired. And you could say, no, we don't want to extend it. We're voting it down. We're good letting it go as is with the sunset. Or you could say, no, things have gotten a lot worse. We need to keep it in place as a tool in the tool shed or whatever you might be willing to do, whatever it might be, and extend it for another month, two months, whatever it is. It was an arbitrary date. You guys can change it. We have no specific, please don't set it one week from the date and pass it because then we'll just be back here every week voting on this. But we tried to pick one that wasn't too far out. I think the original draft, Kelly had it at the end of February because that's what a lot of municipalities had. We just felt like we wanted to give you an opportunity to have everybody come back. If you wanted to invite hospitals or Laura or the public back to have another discussion, you could do that and have a meeting set right before it expired. So no specific reason for the date of expiration, other than it fell after the second meeting in January.
Thanks, Greg. Any other questions or comments from the council?
The only thing I have is just a question if, do we want to have any metrics tied to extension or cancellation of this? Or is it just going to be subjective?
Well, I would, I would assume that we could tie it to the, the dial and where we are now.
Is there a recommendation? I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris. Let's just say a recommendation from Laura or anyone on, you know, what? Trust me, I'd, I want to end the mandate as quickly as possible. And hopefully we're, we're at a good place where, where we can do that. But at the same point in time, I don't want to end a mandate and three late, three weeks later, we're visiting it again because all of a sudden we take a huge uptick. So what, I, I mean, that, that, it's a tough question and a fair question to be asked by Carl on what kind of metric can we tie to this? Is there one? Is there not? And I guess I'm looking to Laura or Dr. Kettner to weigh in on it, just so we have a, an opinion from the, the, the health industry on it.
I wouldn't, I would not necessarily recommend tying it to a metric. You can have that information available at a later date to review before you make that decision. But I don't know that I would recommend tying your hands to, to a metric at this point because there may be other factors we don't know about that may come up and other issues down the road that would perhaps make that metric inaccurate or misleading. So I guess I would not, I would want the council probably to, to keep your, keep all of your options open at that point when you reconsider it, if we get to that point.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? With where we're at, I will restate what I, I said before regarding the statutory rule and then we can proceed from there. So the ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-33. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
I moved.
Second.
The motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I have a motion by Coulterman, second by Wilkin.
Correct.
If there's no further discussion, please call the rule.
Beck. Ellen, I didn't hear you. I apologize.
Oh, yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton, and I'm going to need to unmute you.
Yes.
Camprith.
No.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Hendricks, and I'm going to have to unmute you as well.
No.
Miller.
No.
The motion requires six affirmative votes. The motion fails five to three.
That concludes that item for this evening. We'll be moving on to the next item on the agenda. This is number two.
Mayor.
Items.
Mayor.
What's that?
We have 108 people on the chat, so let's explain what that means just one more time, so they understand. That means we've read the ordinance one time and it will have the subsequent hearing at a subsequent meeting that could be called at any time and not be the next regular meeting. And then the rule can be suspended then. Or it'll be heard a third time at a third meeting. And at that point, it will be voted on if it's not dealt with in some other way. That, that is the final vote after the third one, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
So this doesn't mean that it's dead or that it doesn't happen. It also doesn't mean that it passes. It means that it moves on to another meeting to be read again one more time. And, and we will work through the process. So we don't, we don't want to take, have people running out of here thinking it went either direction. So we'll go from there.
Mayor, what was the ordinance number on this one again? Sorry.
This is 202033. 202032 will be the next one. We had to switch the order on that in case you're looking at it.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just know we have a lot of people that aren't used to all of our rules and how the procedures work. So I wanted to give some clarification.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Our next is ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with Jones Bank for the financing of a Toro Real Master 3555-D mower and authorize the mayor to execute all documents related to the financing agreement.
Just a financing agreement. We do these by ordinance. They're prepared by outside counsel with our bank. This is a budgeted project. So answer any questions you have.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
We're here in a way.
I want to get all the paperwork sorted out.
There's a lot.
The ordinance has been introduced. I'll now read the ordinance. An ordinance authorizing a lease purchase agreement relating to the purchase of equipment for use by the city of Seward, Nebraska.
An ordinance authorizing a lease purchase agreement relating to the purchase of equipment for use by the city of Seward, Nebraska, authorizing the execution of documents with respect to the lease purchase agreement and providing for the publishing of this ordinance. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-32. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Miller, second by Colterman.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton, and I have to unmute him again.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Colterman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, this is ordinance number 2020-32. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Motion in a second.
Goodness, we're going to go with Beck and Wilkin. Does that work? There we go. All right.
We had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number 2020-32 be finally passed and adopted? Please call the rule.
Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Colterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion's approved.
This is the last ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion to make the ordinance part of the permanent record.
So moved.
Moved by Singleton, second by Wilkin.
Sure.
There we go. Thank you.
Please call the rule.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Colterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have number three, extend downtown revitalization DTR grant completion deadline to February 26, 2021 due to delays and contractor availability and COVID-19.
Yeah, working with SEND to administer these, we have a few other, few projects left around. I know one of them is Alyssa's projects, also projects with, I think Red Path is still finishing up, getting invoices in and stuff, and maybe Briggs. But the biggest problem we have is contractor availability. We're in the winter and just trying to get things done. Lot of delays this summer and just trying to get people in the door to do these. So DED is okay with this and we'll continue to work as best we can. The last thing I'd note is I think just to try and get all the money out the door, the recommendation by DED, and we may come back with this after LB840, is to just reallocate what leftover funds we have back to projects that weren't 50/50 funded, to just move them to 50/50 funding. So that the money is spent based on the timelines. We're not going to be able to get anybody else in this year and we want to prepare ourselves to get an application in to get another round of 350 or 400,000 come this summer. And so I think their recommendation of what they would approve for additional stuff is just to up the, anyone that was slightly down in regards to their matches to a 50/50 match, because that's what we advertised at. And then distribute funds so that everyone got 50/50, so that projects can be completely closed out. We can close out the project and reapply for another round. I think that's what the preference is. That will come down the line. Tonight, it's just extending that deadline so we can close the projects and get everybody finished. I can answer any questions you have.
If there's no questions or comments, we entertain a motion.
A move to approve.
I second.
Motion by Miller, I believe, second by Camprith.
Please call the rule.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Colterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, next we have the city administrators' report. Are there any questions for Greg?
We're at the end of the line for the night, so all I'll add to it is thanks for bearing with me tonight. Pivoting to Zoom is tough when the governor springs it on you. The other thing you don't know is that Bonnie's been on vacation, started her two-week vacation, and then our backup got ill today. And so I did all the minutes and ran all this crazy stuff and jumped online and upped our capacity for for Zoom from 100 to 500 people because we were bursting at the seams and I was panicking with text messages coming in going, I can't get on it, it says it's full. And so if I didn't look frazzled, I might have been, but thank you all for bearing.
Great job. Thank you.
Thanks for bearing in there. So that's all I have. I can answer any other questions on the report if you got them.
Keep up the good work, man. Thank you.
Otherwise, we entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wilkin, second by Hendricks.
Please call the rule.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Colterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes, please.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my bedtime, y'all.
Do we have any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Not seeing any. Then Jonathan Jane, do you have a brief announcement of upcoming events?
I got unmuted.
One second.
Flacking.
Great, thanks, thanks, Mayor. I just want to quickly say, thanks, special thanks to the police department for helping with the reverse parade for the Christmas festival. It was a very, very unique year. We were super grateful for their support and obviously trying to follow social distancing requests from our public health department. We really tried to make the Christmas festival as, to follow those guidelines as best as possible. We did have over 500 vehicles come through, about 2,000 participants. And we're really grateful for the community's participation, especially Assistant Chief Peters and, and his other officers for their support of the reverse parade. So with that, thank you.
He's in the room. That's, if you looked at me and I was pointing at people or something, it's because I have my police protection here tonight. So Peters has had to sit through the whole thing tonight. He had some other things he was working on, but he was socially distanced across the room over there, but he heard that. So thank you, Jonathan.
All right, thank you. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I can.
Moved by Singleton.
Please call the rule.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Colterman.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.